We would like to call the meeting to order for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. It is August 5th, 2020. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public's voting stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Henderson is joining us on Zoom this morning. He may be here in person this afternoon. So, thank you, Commissioner Henderson, joining.
Good morning.
Yes, good morning. I don't believe we have any citizen input this morning. Did not, was not aware of any. We do have a consent agenda. Are there any comments there?
I'll move approval of consent agenda.
Okay.
No, second that.
Okay, um, thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Uh, my only discussion was interesting to read the amendment, I think it was the amendment three, aspects of our, of the wraparound services and how that is worded. And we've talked about it previously, so nothing to decide, but just how it's explained and how, you know, how it's going to work. So that was interesting. But I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And the chair votes yes. So, we will continue on with our agenda. And I believe the first item on our regular agenda today is a, something from our road department. And I believe that Chris Dodi will be joining us as Cody is out in the wild somewhere today.
That's right. I hope so. So, good morning, Board. Again, Chris Dodi, Road Department. Pinching for Cody Smith. Before you are two gate permit applications from the Three Sisters Irrigation District to Gate Simmons Road, east of Holmes Road, and then Scimitar Lane, south of Simmons. Both Simmons and Scimitar are non-maintained, or not maintained by the county, public roads. TSID is constructing a hydroelectric facility on their property served by Simmons. And they recently did some road improvements, kind of opened up access to that property, which also contains their reservoir. And in doing that, they opened up some sightlines that made the reservoir visible from Holmes Road and to passersby. And so, now the public sees a body of water, and that's drawing a lot of traffic into their site. It's also kind of conflicting with some, some of the neighborhood issues and then just neighbors adjacent to that site. So you get a lot of looky-loos, kind of heading in there and turning up some dust, and then also trespassing to some degree. And so that, that's the nature of the request from TSID as to the gating of Simmons and Scimitar. Simmons does not provide any access to any public land. It just kind of deadends right there in TSID's property.
Of Chris, you might want to identify TSID. For those watching on Zoom that don't know, it stands for Three Sisters Irrigation District.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. So anyways, they want to control their operation and then be a good neighbor. So they've applied for these two gates in order to do that. There are conditions of approval tied to the gate permit, just like all gate permits. The most important condition, of course, is communicating with emergency services to make sure that they're aware of their gates there and that they have access, should they need to access property behind the gate. So, are there any questions?
No, I was happy to see there was a letter from Captain Garrison. And I just thought it was important that we have this as an action item because it is in my neighborhood, and it's like right down the road. So, anyway, I thought it was important that the community realize everything you've put together and what this gate will help, two gates will help accomplish for their neighborhood to make the issues they've been dealing with kind of simmer down, I would believe.
So, one question is, what's the traffic pattern up Scimitar Lane to that gate? As in, is there residential or EFU-type parcels of access on Scimitar?
So, Scimitar has a way out to the south, and that's the primary entrance and exit from the subdivision. Access out Simmons from Scimitar, I don't think has been used by the subdivision historically, because those roads just haven't been maintained by the county. So.
Okay, yeah. So there's no history.
Neighborhood have been requesting this, for the most part.
The neighbors have been requesting this also?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, good. I understand.
As a part of TSID's application for the hydroelectric facility, some of the neighborhood comments were the necessity to gate this area.
Yep, okay. Wonderful.
Yes, from both sides. So, that's the important thing. Commissioner Henderson, did you have any questions?
No, I understand. I'll make the motion to, for Board signature, document number 2020-528, gate permit number 20-002, authorizing Three Sisters Irrigation District to construct, operate, and maintain gates on Simmons and Scimitar Lane.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Oh, yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you very much, Chris, for presenting that for Cody. We appreciate that today. Our next item is a public hearing. John, would you like to join us?
Certainly. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, this is the time set for a public hearing on petitions that were filed by initial petitioner, Ron Thompson. I thought Mr. Thompson was going to be here. He indicated that he was, but I don't see him. Currently, the West Lepine Livestock District comprises approximately 5,700 acres in southern Deschutes County. In its current configuration, the district is bordered, bordered on the east by Highway 97, on the north by Burgess Road, on the south by Maston Road, and on the west by the Little Deschutes River. Mr. Thompson has filed two petitions with the county to annex additional property into that existing 5,700 acre livestock district. I've provided the Board, as part of the agenda materials, a map that shows, and this is the map I'm referring to, it shows the existing, the southern, southern part of the existing West Lepine Livestock District is in the yellow at the top there. The acreage that would be added to the district by the two petitions is shown, proposed annex petition one is the red hash marks, and proposed annex petition two is the blue hash marks. The proposed area for annexation that is shown by the red hash marks, which is bordered on the east by Highway 97.
Excuse me, John.
Yes.
Just clarifying, we don't have to say we're opening a public hearing. We don't have to make any of those statements at this moment?
Um.
I mean, you're giving clarification.
Yeah. I was going to give clarification as to what the, what the hearing is about. And then, I guess we could open the public hearing and then have me give my clarification at that time.
Right. I was thinking it might.
Yeah.
I'm not, Dave, I don't know if you want to step in here, but normally we do open public hearings, and then we proceed with.
Okay, that's fine. I thought that we had, that you called the public hearing. I apologize.
Okay, well, okay. At this time, I do believe we want to open the public hearing to annex into the West Lepine Livestock District and consideration of the Order Number 2020-042, calling for the election. So, the, the public hearing is now open? So if you want to proceed with.
Okay. So, to be clear, I'm, the county's not the petitioner. The county's not petitioning for annexation of land into the livestock.
Okay.
A private individual, Mr. Ron Thompson, has petitioned the county to annex property into the existing West Lepine Livestock District. As I was stating, the proposed areas for annexation are as shown on the map that was provided to the Board with the agenda items. Petition one, filed by Mr. Thompson, proposes annexation of the area shown with the red hash marks, which is approximately 3,500 acres, bounded on the north by Maston Road, and on the south by the Klamath County line, on the east by Highway 97, and on the west by the Little Deschutes River. The area proposed for annexation in Mr. Thompson's second petition is the area shown by the blue hash marks, which are bordered on the east by the Little Deschutes River, south by the Klamath County line, the north by the extension of the Maston Road line, and then on the west by certain lot lines. In order for these annexations to occur under the applicable Oregon statute, there needs to be an election in which the registered voters in the areas proposed to be annexed by each petition would be the electors, and they would vote to either approve of the annexation or disapprove of the annexation. The area proposed for annexation by petition one, again, the area shown in the map by the red hash marks, there are 71 registered voters in that area. In the proposed petition two area, there are 108 registered voters. So the election would be decided by those registered voters residing in those respective petitions. I've provided the Board with a proposed order. One thing I want to bring to the Board's attention, because it's a little unusual, is Mr. Thompson has proposed these annexations, as I said, through two separate petitions. And if you look at the existing West Lepine Livestock District, and the proposed, the area proposed to be annexed by petition two, they're not really adjacent to each other. They just meet in that one corner, where the, basically Maston Road and the Little Deschutes River meet.
I, I see what you're talking about. Yes.
So, if the electors in the area proposed to be annexed by petition one vote no, but the electors in the area proposed to be annexed by petition two vote yes, it could end up with a very strange-looking annexation to the livestock district. So the way that I drafted the proposed Order 2020-042 is to make the county's approval of the area to be annexed by petition two contingent on the voter's approval of the area proposed by petition one. In other words, if one, if the area to be proposed, the area proposed to be annexed by petition one is not approved by the voters, and that annexation doesn't take place, then the area proposed to be annexed by petition two does not get annexed, and even if the voters approve it. And the reason for that is to avoid that situation where you end up with a very strange annexation that really is not adjacent to or bordering an existing livestock district. But I wanted to bring that to the Board.
That makes perfect sense when you, when you look at this map and you see.
Yeah, I think it would be really tough, it would be very awkward otherwise, but I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention, because that's how I, I prepared the draft order 2020-42. So as I said, this, this is an annexation of land into a livestock district. What it would do is it would, in essence, you know, currently, if this area is open range, which means that livestock owners can, their animals can wander onto other people's private land, if the, if it's not fenced. If this area is annexed into the livestock district, then livestock owners would be responsible for keeping their livestock on their property. It would no longer be the responsibility of other property owners to keep the fence, to fence livestock off. It would be now the livestock owner's responsibility to keep livestock on their property. And the specific livestock that are prohibited from running at large are horses and cattle, and the annexation would be the same.
John, this is Phil. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
I don't know if we've done any of these annexations or even dealt with the livestock district since I've been here. I was curious, is there many of these in the county, or is mostly county and livestock districts?
Uh, you know, Commissioner, I don't know, like, percentage of county that is and isn't. I can tell you there are, I think, over a dozen. I believe somewhere around 13, 14 livestock districts. I know that in addition to, in this area, in addition to the West Lepine Livestock District, which is, you know, like I said, about 5,700 acres immediately north of the area proposed for annexation by these petitions, immediately north of that is another livestock district, the Lazy River Annexation, which is another 2,000 acres. As far as overall square, or overall acreage in the county, I'm not sure, and I'm sorry about that. Interestingly, there are, I believe, approximately a dozen counties in the state that have made their entire counties livestock districts. And then there are, I believe, three or four counties that are wholly livestock-at-large counties, and then the rest of the counties, such as Deschutes, are kind of a mix of at-large and livestock districts.
Interesting. Thank you.
Sure. My understanding is, is that, from my communications with Mr. Thompson, is that there's been development down in this southern part of the county between Maston Road and the Klamath County line. And Mr. Thompson did express to me his feeling that because of that development and the, the decreasing rural nature of that area, that he felt that creating, that extending the livestock, the existing livestock district down to this, down to the county line was appropriate.
So, you're saying that for, like, new residents to that area, if this happens, then if somebody's cow or horse gets out, it's actually going to be the responsive, the liability will go back to the original owner of the animal if that animal causes an accident or gets hit or something, that it will be really the owner's fault?
Right, right.
Or just stands in front of somebody's yard and eats their grass all day.
What about their flowers?
Yeah, their flowers, that's it.
Got to worry, we have to worry about flowers.
It would also be a, a violation.
Yeah, that's.
Under law, too, if a livestock owner within the district allowed their livestock to trespass onto somebody else's property, then I think the presumed penalty is $60 if it was unintentional. So it's not a big penalty, but it's designed to encourage people to acknowledge and follow the dictates of the livestock district.
Okay.
So, yeah, Miss, I have a few words. So Mr. Thompson had connected with me years ago on this, and, you know, so I understand some of the dynamics. It really is some gates and fencing and, next to the river also is a kind of environmental focus, I think, on some of this. The history, though, remember, it used to be the sheep, the sheep used to come down, up and down through central Oregon back in the day, and then it was the Sterns Ranch out of Prineville, used to run their cows all through, they'd go past Riverbend and south through, you know, Sun River and Lepine area. So, I mean, this was a, a major summertime cattle-feeding route, you know, 100, 150 years ago. The partitioning of the land happened many years ago. Most of these, I'm sure, before land use, of course, once again. But this is the requirement to, yeah, have a sturdy, valid fence and gates when you're, when you have livestock and your parcel. So, there are at least one large property owner with cattle, I know, in, well, there's a couple with cattle, but one larger property owner with cattle in here. So, the only thing, you know, my thought is, I don't know that the, the residents that are going to see this on their ballot are going to be up to speed in what it is, why it's on the ballot. And I don't know that that's the position of Deschutes County to try to educate, you know. So as I say, it's just going to look like it's coming out of the blue for those people. It shows up on their ballot, is what I'm thinking, just for discussion. I wish Mr. Thompson was here, because, yeah, he's been asking for this for a couple of years.
Yeah, I believe there will be in the information packet that electors, that.
Yeah, the voter's pamphlet.
There will be some explanation.
Yeah.
Working on that language and getting that language to Nancy Blankenship to include in that, but it, it won't.
And.
I understand what you're saying. If it just shows up on the, on the ballot without any explanation, it could either be confusing or be.
Yeah.
Misunderstood.
Well, one thing, because we were talking about their fire plan in this, this morning, but the interesting unintended good consequence when the sheep were roaming or the cows were grazing through there, that really helps for fires when they go through. If you see what happens when animals have been kind of cleaning the underbrush, the fire really doesn't decimate and burn as hot. And so by eliminating all that, then that's, you know, that puts a bigger responsibility on man in order to keep things cleaner where they need to be, you know, cleaning up, because you don't want to have the intensity of fires when they go through. So, you know, it's like where people hire goats to come in and clean a certain neighborhood. It, they really do a job that, it's helpful, and especially in fire-prone areas. So, we will lose that.
Well, I would think that there would be some information in the voter pamphlet or something.
Yeah.
If it's on the ballot, so at least people can read that. And the people that live down there could put up signs, guess for stock district or something.
Yes.
Well, yeah, 100-something voters.
Hundred and 79 voters. So, yes, a very targeted audience. All right. Any further discussion?
As I say, I mean, it's just a big picture item. This is a request. I think there was a, an effort for a petition to make this go into place without going to the voters. So if there would have been a majority of registered voters sign a petition, it could have been done without a, a ballot measure. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under the statute that applies, if the lead petitioner had obtained signatures in support of the petition by the majority of the landowners and the majority of the registered voters in the district, then we could have avoided election. That was initially Mr. Thompson's plan, but ultimately, he decided to go the election route rather than gather all those signatures.
And being a general election, this is at no cost to, I mean, other than the taxpayers at large, there's no specific cost to a petitioner or the community.
That's correct.
So it's just part of the general election process.
Yes.
Okay. So, do we need a motion then? Are there, is there any?
Maybe call for public testimony one more time on the Zoom.
Yes. Do we have anyone on public that would like to address this issue? The annexation? You don't, no, no one, Stephanie? Okay. And Mr. Thompson isn't even there. All right. Okay. So seeing that there's no further public testimony, I believe at this time we'll close the public testimony. We can.
Maybe, one person, maybe. Let's see.
Somebody's.
This was actually on the agenda for.
For 10:20.
20, so I'm thinking, hmm, this might.
So is this him?
Oh, I hear him.
He was in the wrong room.
There you go. Great.
Okay. So you've made it just in time for public testimony.
Well, I was, I was sent down to this room here, and there's nobody there, but I could see you guys.
Yes.
Okay, well, please join us.
Please join us with the microphone.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Ron Thompson, Ronald Ray Thompson.
Okay. And if you want to give your testimony, we are actually at public testimony right at this moment.
Okay. What, are there questions, or do I just explain?
Please explain.
The purpose of the petition and everything?
Yes.
So we did have an introduction, and the public hearing is open, so we've kind of digested the paperwork on this. So if you can provide the context as much as you want as the chief petitioner.
Sure. I was, you know, I've had some issues with people, with that, things out there, and so, so it's a livestock issue. The, the current laws, in my view, are, are quite antiquated. Is it okay if I just speak without this?
Actually, it's, it's being recorded, and so it's, honestly, it's better if you have it on.
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, if you.
No.
You can speak and not pass out.
We're all muffled.
Yes, I know.
So, basically, the, it's a, the livestock district versus open range issue is one where, in a livestock district, livestock has to be kept under fence, and in an, in an open range situation, it's not. So, in the, in the situation down here, there, open range traditionally is public land where people can apply by permit to graze livestock in the summer collectively. There is no land like that down in, probably anywhere in Deschutes County. Could be wrong on that, but certainly down on the south end, there isn't. So, and in this particular area that the petition covers, there's, there's really only one livestock operation there. That's Joyce Miltonberger, an old historic family who keeps, like, 20 cows and breeds them and has calves and so on. She's really the only person with cattle. There are a number of people with horses. Well, people, people with horses, there isn't one of them who wants their horse out running loose on public land anywhere, because the risk reward of that is not very good. So, you know, so basically, it's a situation where people, and I went door to door and quite thoroughly covered the area, people, people were really kind of appalled to find that nobody really has to fence cattle in. And so, if, so basically, somebody could go out there, buy an unfenced, unfenced piece of land, get, put some cattle on, cattle could run all over the place, and it's up to all their neighbors to fence them out, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. But nonetheless, when, when the Lepine Livestock District was created, Maston Road was arbitrarily made the southern boundary. Why it didn't extend all the way to the county line, I don't know, because there really haven't been any livestock operations in that area, to my knowledge, other than Joyce Miltonberger's, which is a very controlled private land, 20 head of cows, kind of thing. And then, one of the other issues is that there are a lot of other laws and regulations to do with open range. And so, you know, it just opens up a whole can of worms of a lot of things. Like, for example, if you have cattle on open range, if you have 10 or more, you are required by law to have a registered pure bred bull. And for every 20 cattle, another bull. So, for every 20 head of cattle, a registered purebred bull. Well, nobody has that. And nobody wants that. Nobody wants a bull out there running around. So, but when you, when you go back to more historic times, when there were vast acreages where people would bring cattle, it makes sense. And the whole purpose of that was so that somebody couldn't put their cows out there and have someone else's expensive purebred bull breed them for free. So, anyway, so it just eliminates a whole, a whole lot of, of issues there. And. a whole, a whole lot of, of issues there. And literally every single person that I spoke to on the petition really was, was kind of surprised that that was the situation and nobody, nobody wants cattle running around. So I, and any, any questions or?
Well, thanks for the, the, you know, lay of the land there, understanding what's going on. So I mean, I'd be supportive of getting this to a vote of the people in November. So this is the public hearing process. I know you had attempted to do it by petition and this is the next step to get the, get it on the ballot. So
Yeah.
This is the process.
It, the whole petition thing, you know, was kind of interesting too, because you know, you go to, you don't know who's on a voter's list or not, or whether you should know. So you just go to the people and you have some renters and some landowners and some lands that are absentee owned, some old ranch lands that are absentee owned, but don't have any livestock or anything. And so, you know, who, you know, what, what value does, does anything have to say over that? You know, if you're a ranch holder with, holder with a $10 million piece of property, but you're never there and you have a caretaker and there's no livestock, what's your, what's your interest in, in any of that?
Yep, understood.
So
Thanks for being involved in the political process to get something done.
Sure.
It would be a vote of the people.
Okay. It sounds great.
Your 179 voters. So yes, it's, you know, you've been working on this for quite a while. So glad that you were able to join us today and give us that clarification, the historical picture of what, what you're really trying to, you know, establish and why didn't they go to the county line? That would have been a bit simpler, wouldn't it?
It really would. Yeah.
Yes.
And just, I'm not, I'm 72 in another week and, and I've, I've been very familiar with this whole area my entire life. So it's not like something, you know, that I've just got a thing on. My, my own personal issue is I've had a neighbor across the river who doesn't own cattle, but has brought them in from time to time and lets them cross the river. In my opinion, they really shouldn't even be on the riverbanks. And that wouldn't only be my opinion. But they cross the river and make a big mess. And, you know, with, with it being a livestock district, they then have to fence them onto their property, which, which also means fencing them off of the riverbank, which is, which is another issue that, that goes on at a few other locations further down river to the north of, of Lapine too.
Yes. Yes, it does.
Well, thank you very much for
Okay.
joining us today.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for getting word to me to come in.
Yes.
Yeah, we were hoping somebody
We were hope, yes, we were, we were thinking you would be here. I mean, we did start a few minutes early from our agenda time, but you know, anyway, thank you, Ron, for joining us.
My pleasure. Thanks for the opportunity.
All right.
Thank you, Thompson. I appreciate it also.
Okay. So, John, we've had public comment. We've seen no other public comment. We could close the public hearing and actually deliberate and vote at this moment, I believe, if we follow standards. Any further discussion? No?
Nope. So public hearing is closed, you're saying?
I'm, okay, we are closing the public hearing and, any comments?
As I say, Mr. Thompson came to me years ago and laid out some of this. I knew he was doing the petition process and this is the next step, really getting into a vote of the people. We had a great introductory comments and discussion here, and I'm glad Mr. Thompson was able to join us. So those 179 voters, I'm in support of having them see this on their ballot in November. And, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
So you want to make the motion then?
So yeah, I'll make a motion to, for supporting annexation, a vote of the people for annexations into West Lapine Livestock District. So consideration of order number 2020 dash 042 calling the election.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, John, are we good?
We're good. Thank you.
Now, thank you very much. This was a whole new education on why I don't want my horses to get on the road.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting to, to learn that because you, sometimes you drive along and you see things that say open range. And I didn't know that things had to be taken out of open range, that open range was the starting kind of assumption that, and to get out of that, you have to delete livestock district. That's interesting.
Yeah, it's open, the assumption, or the default is open range unless the entire county has elected to be a livestock district. That's the only way you can kind of flip that default position.
Yeah, interesting.
Okay. But we, and there are BLM grazing east Deschutes County. I mean, so I don't know that that'd be appropriate for the whole county at this time. I mean, there are some grazing opportunities in, in the county. So this is the way to take little bites out of it.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, Ed Keith, would you like to join us?
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Ed Keith, Deschutes County Forester. Today we have before you the revision, the 2020 revision of the Greater Lapine Community Wildfire Protection Plan, document 2020 dash 434. And I'm going to just start with a quick introduction and then actually invite Boone Zimmerley to give you a little bit more details on, on what was involved in this particular revision. I, I do recognize that you had a little bit of a presentation with your meeting with the Lapine City Council as well. So some of this may be a review, but we'll, we'll go over it nonetheless for the benefit of the audience today, as well as a little bit of a refresher. So, so with that, the Greater Lapine Community Wildfire Protection Plan is one of seven plans we have throughout the county. We do try to revise those on a five-year basis. So we rotate around the county as those come due for revision to try to keep those up to date and relevant. The community wildfire protection plans are really a non-regulatory document. It doesn't bind any particular signing party to do anything. It's, it's, it's really a cooperative plan that everybody's really in agreement with, hopefully. It does involve multiple partners. The signature tours to the plan include the local government. So in this case, both Deschutes County and the city of Lapine, as well as the local fire district. So the, the Lapine Fire District in this case, and then the state forestry agency, so the Oregon Department of Forestry. Those are the, the signatures required by the Healthy Forest Restoration Act that formulated these community wildfire protection plans. We do work with multiple partners. We started working on this revision in, in late 2019. A lot of this work was done early 2020 and then a little bit put on hold with reshuffling of in-place meetings to transitioning over to virtual meetings. So it has been revised and kind of been waiting for the time, the appropriate time to bring back to you to, to look at where we could also meet with the Lapine City Council. So that's just a little bit of overview. And I'd like to give Boone just a minute or two to go through a few specifics of what we've revised in this particular plan revision.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Boone Zimmerley, Fire Adapted Communities Coordinator for Deschutes County. So highlighting some of the changes. You know, the first one up is the change in the boundary. We adjusted the boundary ever so slightly to account for the adjacent CWPP plans in the area. We also used a new risk assessment. We use the Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer, which is somewhat of a standard or becoming the standard for CWPPs, which aligns with our other revisions that we've done so far through the county. We've updated accomplishments in the area. So that includes the Greater Lapine Joint Chiefs Project and a few others that the Department of Forestry had and a few other pieces down there. So those are the big changes, you know, and as we go through the process, where we currently are in the process, we've, I think Ed may have just stated it, but the city of Lapine, they've signed it. And then next we'd be looking at your signatures before we go for the, all the other signatures on the CWPP.
Well, a few words. I see that the, the south edge of the county is, is kind of the area that we're talking about, Lapine and the greater area, which includes that livestock district we just talked about, or the proposed new extension to the livestock district. Also, I do live in this CWPP planning area. I was involved probably just the first meeting because COVID really kind of stopped us from personal meetings afterwards. But I was in the first meeting at the end of last year at the Lapine Fire District Hall. We all got together and talked about this. It's nice that we're in a kind of a mature point where we're taking an existing document that is not very, very old. You know, we're talking about five-year type increments on these. Boone?
Yes, five years.
Yeah, that's correct.
So yeah, so a five-year window, you know, being able to pull off something that's not, you know, more old than that and update it. I always think of the residents, like real estate agents, new citizens to the area. You know, once people find this and just at least flip through it and find some interesting parts and pieces of it, it really does provide the lay of the land. And then also that partnership with the Forest Service, BLM, Department of Forestry, Fire District itself. You know, what a valuable tool. As I say, not everybody figures it out or finds it at the same time, but the people that do, it becomes a pretty darn valuable tool just for a, a sense of place in a fire adapted community. So, you know, I know it's our commitment as a board of commissioners to, you know, have our county forester and fire adapted communities coordinator. So I'm just real positive on the whole thing.
Thank you.
Boone, I noticed that the fires that did just occur down in that, in the neighborhood in Lapine, that they were looking for arson, have they been successful and receiving any tips on that, do you know?
No, I haven't been following it very closely, but my assumption would be that it's still under investigation. And that I would think that we'd probably hear a little bit more about it. I can search that out if you'd like to, like a little follow-up on where they are in that.
Well, I know the Forest Service sent out a notice on it. I think the biggest one was what, 393 acres? So
Yeah.
The other two, fortunately, they were able to catch them sooner. But it's, you know, it's really unfortunate. What is, when you look at the percent of fires that are actually started by man accidentally or on purpose, it's, it's quite amazing, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. And you know, that, that fire was a great example of seeing our fuels treatment where we've hit those priority areas. You know, it did run to 393 acres, but where they did catch it was where we transitioned from untreated lands into treated lands. And it gave the firefighters the upper hand to be able to control that fire.
I know, I know. I was
It's a success story.
Just driving down to Lapine this weekend, and I did notice that like the grass is starting to turn, you know, kind of dry and, what is the word, brittle and very flammable. So I know people are going to have to really pay a lot of attention.
Yeah, that, that is correct. You know, as we turn to this time of the, of the fire season, this is when we, exactly like you said, we look at the grasses, especially those perennials and look for the curing of them to see when they make that transition. You know, the primary carrier of our fires, maybe not the intensity, but the carrier is generally light flashy fuels like grass. And then following that is, is generally the brush for the intensity. But we are, you're spot on. We've turned that corner and I see that we've, most of the agencies have elevated their fire danger to extreme as of, I think, two weeks ago or a week and a half ago.
Yes.
Well, and just like you mentioned, the prioritized areas, the treatments that are being put in, you know, advocating for prescribed burns, knowing where the prescribed burn priorities are in partnership with all the agencies. We're getting a little bit of a continuity year after year to this, these projects.
Yeah, the accumulation of the aggregate effect, you know, as we, as we do identify the priority areas and then, you know, the Forest Service may work on something, but also it gives ourselves and ODF kind of the, you know, I named the two of us because we usually deal with or work with private landowners. But we give, it gives us the, the areas, you know, it identifies us or helps us to identify where we can get that aggregate effect by combining those treatments.
And Fire Free and South County was incredibly successful this year. So, you know, that makes at least me feel that we really, you know, the neighborhood has really put a big effort out to clean up. And hopefully it will make, continue to make that difference.
Yeah.
And the next thing is, yeah, nap weed and weed polling events. In fact, for, for Ed's information, I, I did bring a, a box of bags to three different locations in Lapine, Chamber of Commerce in the city. And the city mentioned, they have a lot of bags. So I was surprised. I brought in a box of yellow bags for citizens, which they're grabbing and utilizing. But the city said, oh yeah, we've got quite a supply. So just so our staff understands that. We don't need to send them yellow bags anymore this year.
So, Commissioner Henderson, I have a couple of questions and comments.
Oh, yes. Please go ahead.
One is that if, just in terms of presentation, for me, I'd like to have the map of the area up front. Like maybe there's a big white space under the table of contents or way up there. Because I think that's the first people, thing people want to know is what, what's the boundaries? You've got one on page six, I see. But that's just a thought I have is maybe that. And then you have a, a comment back on page nine about fires, recent wildfires. I, I really find it informative when you do those maps that show where the fires were, you know, the, Ed, we've gone over those on, you know, the whole landscape. But that'd be interesting to see also in this so that people get a feel for that. I think that'd be a good visual.
Yeah.
Just a couple of thoughts. I was interested when you're talking about the amount of, under, on page 10, public and private accomplishments. You say in total, 16,584 acres of fuel treatments have been completed or awarded on U.S. Forest Service lands within Lapine Community Wildfire Plan boundary since the 2015 revision. And you break it down. How many more acres are there to treat? I mean, what is that? I, I can't tell by the map. It seems like there's, and if, is that, is there any way to talk about that's of the priority of X number that we're trying to get done in the next five years? Or is there any?
Since there's 79,000 acres in the, in the CWPP, are you going to actually try and work on all those 79,000 acres? Or special locations?
You know, we do have it, it's deeper in the document, but we could definitely work to bring some of that stuff up a little bit more higher in the levels of being able to see it. But, you know, deeper in the document, when you look at the Risk Explorer, it does break it out by ownership of how many acres per ownership. But it's a, it's definitely some good input that if we show the total acres that the Forest Service has and then show the, the amounts that they've treated and then what they hope to plan to treat. I think we could probably, yeah, we could bring that up into the document. I think that's a good point.
Well, it might, it might be just interesting so somebody can, it puts it in perspective that
Yeah.
60,000 of what? And, and then of the what is remaining, it's not all probably of equal priority. So just so it shows that transition, I guess, too.
Yeah.
Well, and there always could be like a, I mean, just throwing out ideas now, but you know, one pager summarizing this document too. Introduction to, you know, acres treated last five years, goals for the next five years, simple footprint of the area. You know, you could almost have a one-page brochure that presents this document for somebody too. And I'm not tasking that right now. I'm just throwing out ideas.
Yeah. And we, and we have, and maybe Ed can talk further to, you know, as this is my first year directly involved with the CWPPs as far as revisions. We have been working on a one-pager document. We've been, one of the attempts that we've been talking about between Ed and I is using that first piece, that executive summary of it as our one-page document, try to summarize that a little bit better and then be able to take a lot of that verbiage directly into a one-pager so that we can get the word out without having to give everybody a, a big 80-page document. Ed, do you want to add to some of that?
How many?
Go ahead.
PPs, are there again in the county?
There are seven.
Seven areas, yeah, okay. And the biggest hole is, is the Bend area? There's not one for the Bend?
There is a Greater Bend Community Wildfire Protection Plan actually, and will be, that's, that's coming around for revision.
will be, that's, uh, that's coming around for revision, uh, probably in 2021 if memory serves.
Well, I'm support of acknowledging this document at this time, so this would be, you know, kind of, um, finalizing this version of this five-year, uh, document. Commissioner Henderson, is there anything specifically what, edited now, or?
Oh, well, I'm, I don't know, is that a role? I was just commenting if-
Yeah.
-the document that, for the people to read, if they, that would be a couple of ideas I have, but I, I'm fine with, I mean, it probably includes.
Okay, well, with that, I'll move board signature of document number 2020 dash 434, acknowledgement of the revision of the 2020 Greater Lapine CWPP.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I just wanted to point out to the community, if, um, looking at from 2008 to 2017, there were average fires per year was 15, so that means that everyone needs to stay extremely, um, vigilant this time of year, so, um, right, the biggest, the average acreage burn was, um, per year was 20, but if you look back to 2003, that's when they had a huge fire, which was over 21,000 acres, so just, I think it shows that people are really staying vigilant, and if you can catch a fire early and stop it, that's what's important. Commissioner, um, Debone?
Uh, vote yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes, but I had a question, uh, Chair, there, are you, was that something from this?
Yes, it's on packet page 207, um, that information about the average fires per year, but that, those documents are only from 2008 to 2017, but if you look back on packet page 175, that's where it shows that huge fire, the Davis Lake Fire.
Yeah.
So it just looks like, um, you know, neighbors are really paying attention.
All right, so I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you for joining us.
And a quick acknowledgement of Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer, so that's a statewide database system, uh, over, overlaid with, uh, GIS. I don't know if, Boone, if you want to explain that just real quick, so that's a system we're basically running a report out of.
Yeah, it is, and, you know, and that can be, uh, as you know, Tony, a pretty good talk all on itself, but it is, uh, there was an effort a couple of years ago, they took all of the data across Oregon and Washington, but it did a quantitative risk assessment where they ran modeling, assuming data and, uh, assuming fuels, data, topography, and they ran it for the probability of having 250-acre fires, and then they also overlaid all of the data that they had for values at risk, and in between those two, they were able to quantify the relative risk to our values out there.
So just, yeah, another follow-up, so Project Wildfire, uh, this has been an item, it was basically a education and introduction to what this tool is, you can take a single property or a neighborhood or a geographic area and run this report, uh, so it, it's very, very much available to the world right now.
Great.
One other comment, um, in case people don't know it, is, uh, the film, um, is it Rebuilding Paradise, or?
Yeah.
Is being shown this Friday at 7:00, um, that's about the town of Paradise and, and, uh, it's produced by somebody, who's it produced by, somebody?
Ron Howard.
Ron Howard, yeah, and that's going to be pretty interesting, and I, and I, I've already, uh, registered, it's an outside venue, uh, but if you guys want to say a little more about that, that might be interesting for anybody listening.
Yeah, it's a, uh, Deschutes Forest Collaborative in, uh, in conjunction with, I believe it's, um, it's one of the Bend film, uh, I, I can't remember their name off the top of my head, but they're putting it together right there behind, uh, Deschutes Brewery, and it's Rebuilding Paradise, it's a Ron Howard film where they follow two, um, two homeowners that lost their homes and then follow their struggles as they decide whether they want to rebuild there or move on to somewhere else. And you can, I believe if you, uh, Google it, you can find it easy enough, but I, I have to look around if for some reason you guys can't, or we need a link to it or something.
Okay, thank you for that information, and, um, hopefully we can get that information out with our meeting today, so, yes, Rebuilding Paradise, uh, directed by Ron Howard. So, um, thank you for joining us today and, um, appreciate all the work and, um, glad to hear that we're going to be doing, uh, what, Greater Bend next year, so, um, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Have a great day. Tim, are you available to join us now?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Tim Schimpf, Director of the Department of Solid Waste, and we're here today seeking Chair's signature of a sales agreement for purchase of a new Caterpillar 836K landfill compactor. This is the primary piece of equipment in our landfill, um, it, it does the best job out there for compacting waste, maximizing use of our airspace, you know, extending the life of the landfill as much as we can with that piece of equipment. It's, it's such an important piece of equipment that we have two of them on hand, so one is a backup, so if our primary compactor is down for maintenance or repairs, we have another one that can continue on and we maintain that efficiency. The purchase is made through, uh, an organization called Sourcewell, that's a new name, prior to that, it was known as the Joint Exercise of Powers Alliance. This is a, an intergovernmental agency formed, um, I think in the, in the state of Minnesota, um, that, that does procurement, you know, bidding, um, and then participating members, other government entities can purchase off of those, those, uh, solicitations. Um, we joined this, this agency, um, back in 2011, I attached a couple of documents that showed board actions to join this group. Oregon law does allow participation in cooperative purchasing for local governments like that. Um, basically, it's, it's kind of like bulk purchasing, so, um, when, when this group puts out a solicitation for landfill compactor, um, bids, um, the, the manufacturers know that it's quite likely they'll sell any number of these as opposed to selling one to one individual agency, and so we tend to get very good prices. Um, on the sales agreement document, um, you see the list price for this compactor would be $1,243,001, um, we're realizing just under $150,000 in savings by going through this cooperative. Um, purchases made locally from Peterson, Caterpillar, and Redmond, um, they are actually offering an additional $50,000 discount off of that list price, and then we will, we will trade our backup compactor as we purchase this new compactor, and they're offering $125,000 trading value for that as well. So, we're proposing a purchase here of $958,042, that's a very good price, I think the last time we purchased one of these, which was probably seven or eight years ago, um, we paid just about that same amount, and, and that was, uh, not through the, through the co-op, that was, uh, we did it, you know, it was just a simple, straightforward government purchase, and so to get, to get that large piece of equipment at the same price we paid about seven years ago is, I think, a very, very good price. So, we're recommending approving this, and have any questions?
Once you put the order in, how long does it take to get it?
Um, that's, I mean, we're here very early in the fiscal year because in the past, we've had trouble getting those manufactured and delivered in the same fiscal year as we ordered it, so all, the best I can say at this point is we're hoping to get it before June 30th of, uh, 2021. Hopefully, we can get it in six to eight months, but with the COVID and, you know, there's a lot of factors out there right now that, um, make that difficult, you may recall that we, we were purchasing two transfer trailers in the last fiscal year that we thought would easily be delivered and, and they won't, they haven't been delivered yet in this fiscal year, so we had to re-budget for those, so it's really, really uncertain as to how long it will take to get it, so we're doing it as early as we can.
Okay, is this piece of equipment actually made in America, then?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah, it's nice that, uh, we're able to purchase from the local dealer as opposed to somebody, you know, in the Midwest, um, and, and I believe that if Peterson didn't like the, the arrangement here, they would, they could refuse to sell to us and we would go somewhere else, but obviously, we're a good customer, they like us, gave us an additional $50,000 discount, um, they're good outfits.
I think I remember the last time we purchased this, the, I remember seeing the wheels, the big compacting wheels come in on train, train beds, I mean, they, it is that big, it's a huge piece of equipment.
Yeah, the, the main body comes in one load, the blade, or sometimes the blade and the wheels will come on a second load, sometimes it's three loads to get it here, and then a big frame to put those, those, those pieces together here at the landfill, it's not easily transported.
Yeah. Great.
Well-
You're muted, Bill.
Oh, I'm muted. I'll move Chair's signature of document 2020, page 533, purchase of Caterpillar 836K landfill compactor.
Then I'll second it.
Further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes.
Mr. Debone?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we do have a deer out eating our flowers, in case anyone, right behind you, Stephanie, it's around the corner, Adele was, um, eating the beautiful flowers, so, anyway, have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim, thank you for joining us today, and let's see if we get it before June 30th of 2021.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jessica, Jaxx? Um, if Jessica's going to be with us now for, um, Taking Med Seriously campaign? Oh, Julia, maybe, I see Jessica there. There she is, good morning.
Good morning, for the record, I'm Jessica Jaxx, Prevention Program Supervisor for Deschutes County Health Services, and I'm joined by Julie Stackman, who will catch everything that I can't answer. Um, uh, here today to request your approval for receiving $4,980 to support, uh, the Take Med Seriously Oregon Campaign Initiative. This is an initiative that we've actually been working on here for a couple of years now in collaboration with community partners, um, it's specifically designed to raise awareness of prescription drug safety, in particular, safe use, safe storage, and safe disposal of medications. Uh, recently, we, Julie, uh, was the recipient of some additional resources specifically to, um, promote, uh, this message in Spanish, we have been, um, distributing it in English and Spanish for the past couple of years, however, our recent public service announcement has not been translated or promoted in Spanish, and so these resources will be split towards that. The, the dollars are a one-time, uh, opportunity and they come to us from the Central Oregon Health Council, so they should be spent, uh, by, uh, December, um, and there is no FTE associated with these dollars. Um, with that, I guess, are there any questions?
Um, well, I noticed that we have two that I'm aware of, um, Spanish, uh, radio stations locally, do we, um, is there a television, um, application for the video in Spanish?
So, I can address that, um, we have received quotes from La Branca Radio, which serves, um, Deschutes County and other parts of central Oregon, and also from Central Oregon Telemundo, which is a television station, and so the funds, um, are estimated to be split between those two different, uh, local stations, one radio and one television.
Okay, great, so we do have a, um, a Spanish television station, then?
It's part of the KTVZ, um, suite of stations.
So, can you get that on DirecTV? How, how do you access that station?
Um, at, at my house, I don't have cable, I can get it over, like, the regular, uh, airwaves, I don't have to have cable, um, I'm not sure how other people access it.
Okay.
This, um, it doesn't seem like this is very much money to comp-
Right.
A little bit of advertising, do you need more, or is that?
So, these grants had a funding limit of $5,000 and we created a budget to fit that, that amount.
This is Central Oregon Health Authority?
Uh, Health Council, and this is under their mini-grant, um, in response to the pandemic, and, uh, we just recognized that prescription medications are a challenge in all circumstances, and during the pandemic, we wanted to boost the awareness of safe use, safe disposal, and safe storage of meds.
I just wonder if you, um, are doing all this, you're developing the scripts, you're figuring out how to get it on, we have that $6.4 million of funds from the CARES Act that it seemed like this would be something we could contribute to, to double your effort or whatever, I, I know our people are meeting today to see what, at, where, what might apply, and it seems like this would be something that would be a CARES Act, uh, use possibly, and so it'd be something I'd be in supportive if it is, I mean, once you get it going, it's good to have enough out there to make a difference, and there's a lot of-
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, I really appreciate that, um, there's actually an English website and a Spanish, matching Spanish website, and this particular 32nd PSA would be translating the 32nd English PSA into Spanish and then getting it out there, but as you know, um, advertising is always very expensive, and so getting more than two months' worth of airtime would be fabulous.
I think Administrator Anderson is going to be meeting with a group, talking about avenues for CARES funding, this would be one to put in the mix possibly.
Thank you.
Well, so I think, uh, the way that might work is, uh, kind of prepay for something and then look for reimbursement, is that what we're learning about how these CARES funds would be available?
Uh, yeah, Commissioners, Commissioner Henderson, exactly right, we actually met yesterday, uh, initially, and we already have a category for, um, uh, communication in Spanish and other, um, you know, various mediums, so this was easily folded into that kind of broader category that will be, um, included and bring, brought back to the board reasonably soon.
There you go, well, uh, you know, great discussion, with that, I, I will, uh, move board approval of, of receiving a $4,980 grant from Central Oregon Health Council Mini Grant Program to support Take Med Seriously Oregon Campaign.
I'll second that.
Thank you, any further discussion? Um, Commissioner Debone?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes, and definitely, I do believe what you're talking about here needs to be expanded more than two months' worth, so, Julia and, uh, Jessica, if you can work on that, um, with our CARES funding, I think it's, it's an issue that is only going to get worse, um, and we really need to address it now, so, um, thank you so much for working on this. Um, I do have a question, Julia, what are you telling people to do with their meds?
So, there's actually on the Take Med Seriously Oregon website, um, there are safe disposal locations around the central Oregon region, and it, um, on the tab on the website, you can go to safe disposal as an option, and then it gives you addresses, um, of all the different safe disposal locations across, um, the central Oregon region, and actually, this campaign originated in Deschutes County, but it's been picked up by other communities across the state, and so there's locations in other parts of the state that have been listed by my colleagues in other counties.
Excellent, and the most important thing is do not put your med down the toilet, so I know they, we were saying that a long time ago, and that is definitely not what you want to do, so, um, thank you for doing that, and please go to the website then and find out where you can safely, um, just, you know, get your meds out of the house because- you know, get your meds out of the house because some of them can be a danger for other people in your family. It's important. So thank you, thank you for joining us this morning.
I, I just wanted, I had one quick question. Does also require a budget adjustment?
Oh.
Something that happens simultaneously?
Okay, a budget adjustment.
So this is, Jessica, this is new revenue. So it does not require a budget adjustment to add it in. If it, if the expense associated with the new revenue is one that will force your program to exceed its fiscal year budget, then that is something that could be cleaned up at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much, you all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adaro was just going to note for your information, we have a safe medication disposal
box over in our doc clinic right across the parking lot. So that's available to all employees or anyone, anyone, the public generally, who walks in the door. I know there's also one at the Sheriff's Office that's available for safe disposal of medications.
Okay. So that's by our pharmacy and also at the Sheriff's Office. So great. Thank you.
Hello. I use the one at the pharmacy. I bag up my pill bottles until I have enough and then I take them in, like returning bottles.
That's really great. And for all of the disposal sites, for anyone listening or watching, go to the Take Med Seriously Oregon site and find a location that's near you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we are now almost on time for our COVID Public Health Update today. I believe Nahad and Dr. Fawcett and Dr. Conway are ready for their presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. Am I, am I loud and clear?
You are loud and clear.
Wonderful. I'm just sharing my screen. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Anderson. Good morning, everyone there.
Well, real quick, we could take a moment and acknowledge, so this is an opportunity for a Facebook Live video segment also. Last week, we saw outreach by a couple thousand people being able just to see the segment of the Public Health Update. So I'm thinking this could be very valuable. You know, we get emails, people asking questions. Sometimes it's the same question that's being answered during here, during this session also. So just acknowledging that and let's see what we can do to make it the most valuable information dissemination opportunity.
And thank you, Whitney, for setting that up. It is, the response has been terrific. So thank you.
Yeah, indeed. Thank you so much for that. A good morning to, a good morning to all of you, the public, the media, and a hearty good morning to my dear wife and a few neighbors who I think are tuning in to listen to the facts about this pandemic. My name is Nahad Sadrazodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Dushut County Health Services. I have with me Dr. Richard Fawcett with proper physical distance between us and our, who's our health officer, and of course, Dr. Conway, who's our administrator, and he's on Zoom. As always, I'd like to start off by acknowledging our department staff from all service areas for their dedication and hard work. Also, I'd like to thank Jenny Faith, our epidemiologist, for the data analysis and updates. Commissioners, we are entering the eighth month of our rocky relationship with this virus. And perhaps a good reminder that in the absence of vaccines and therapeutic drugs, really, we need to suppress this pandemic. And that's a core challenge for us. We need to suppress this pandemic through our choices and actions. At the same time, we need to be meeting the needs of the vulnerable groups, such as the poor, the minorities, and the elderly. We should prevent this public health emergency from turning into a fulminant financial crisis for the governments, for the businesses, and households. And of course, we need to build better with our, with a resilient health system, institutions, and economy as we move forward. In this next slide, as of August 4th, we have a total of 548 cases with 364 who have recovered and unfortunately, eight deaths. We did see a drop of nearly 30% last week in the number of new cases. And as of this week, on Monday and Tuesday, we have 11 cases reported. It's been around, I believe, four or five weeks since face covering has become mandatory in public places. And if all of us in our communities are wearing masks, we should start seeing its impact within these days and weeks. And this slide shows the cumulative numbers and it shows us the rate of change, which we have seen a significant increase in the last few weeks, increase in the rate of change. As mentioned previously, this is not a second wave. This is continuation of the first wave. And in this next slide, we see a large number of people in their 20s affected by this virus, with around half the cases between the ages of 20 and 50. In this next slide, we see the patient demographics and clearly see that pretty much everyone is vulnerable to acquiring this virus and transmitting it. In, in the month of July, we see an equal distribution amongst the various age groups with some shifts from previous months. The month of May seems to be an anomaly in terms of the number of folks under 30 affected by this virus. This last slide before I give the floor to Dr. Fawcett. In this slide, we see how cases are being categorized. And it's, and I'd just like to mention that it's not perfect. It's very actually complicated in doing the investigation, the contact tracing interviews, and being able to attribute the cases to certain risks as well as categorize them accordingly. So if a person, for example, for, for, for the public to notice that if a person is linked to a particular outbreak, another person in that particular scenario could also be a close contact of someone else who could also be linked to a household member. So you see, it's not a clear-cut situation here. But we're doing our best to figure out how to identify these patterns. And this is of course important because when we're able to identify patterns or drivers, then we're able to have more targeted policies rather than blanket ones. And the takeaway from this slide and other conversations is that majority of the cases over the past three months can be traced to other cases. And that's important as opposed to unknown cases or unknown linkages or community acquired or sporadic. So majority of the cases can be traced to other cases, and that's important for us to keep in mind. A second message is that we know that long-term care facilities, the congregate care, congregate care settings are a priority setting. And we know that we have had cases and outbreaks in these facilities in the last month. The third message is that we have had outbreaks associated with businesses over the past month. But it's also important to keep in mind that it's not just the individuals working at those businesses who are affected. These outbreaks might also affect family members, friends, clients, customers, and other close contacts to those individuals who work or receive service at those businesses. And there is no particular sector or type of business that seems to be most impacted at the moment. So these are all important key messages. With that, I would like to now give the floor to Dr. Fawcett to walk us through the next couple of slides. I'm just going to put my mask on. Microphone closer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me.
Good morning, Dr. Fawcett. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner Adaro. Appreciate it. So I'm going to look at the, the, the numbers again as we have for the last several weeks in this slide. This is broken down week to week. There is a little bit of a shift and I apologize for this, but it's looking now Sunday to Saturday where before we were doing Monday to Sunday. So the last data point here is August 1st, which was Saturday, this past Saturday. Looking carefully at the graph here, there's a number of different data points and tabulations. So the, the light bars represent the number of negative tests. The, the solid bars at the bottom represent the number of positive tests week to week. The number at the top, at the very top of the columns, is the number of total tests week to week. Then there is a dashed line that sort of runs across the chronology from left to right. And that is the week-to-week case positivity rate, which of course is pretty critical to look at. So, 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 and that, that test positivity rate is listed on the right-hand side, the very far right-hand side on the Y-axis. If you look 0% to 10%, so that kind of gives you a way to judge that dashed line that's running across the, the weeks there.
Dr. Fawcett?
So, yes?
Because the last through 8-1, that still has like a little pink underneath it, is, does that mean that those numbers are not finalized yet for the last week through last Saturday? Because it looks like, you know, if you look at it, is that a final number? And did the positivity really go down to 2%, which is so critical?
Commissioner Adaro, I think that it did not go down that low. We spent some time looking at this in the last hour, but, you know, we, we have, if we, if we take it through Sunday night, you know, we're counting 77 cases for the week. And that takes us up to, actually, that, that, that takes us up to Monday as to 548. So it looks like there were a number of cases that were entered in or dumped in, if you will, at some point through the weekend. So I think that, I don't know what that last case positivity rate actually is. It's not going to be that low, around 2% as you see there. So, yeah. So I guess that is fair to say that that pink shade, which I don't have on my, my copy of this, but that really represents that it's still being finalized, yeah.
Okay.
But that's a good point. We need to have that up to date. And we will do that. I, I think the total of 77 for the week, again, that's shifting through, through Monday, is better than it was the, the week before. So we're, I think we're at 108 if I remember correctly the week before. So we've come down. The number of total tests went down as well. I'm not sure why that was exactly, but, so that changes our numbers. But I think that we're going to find a pretty stable, if not lower, test positivity rate for this last week. And we'll, we'll get that number figured out today.
Dr. Fawcett, this is Commissioner Henderson.
Yes.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Looking at the chart, the positivity rates, red line that you have, it's interesting that back in March, late March, early April, it had risen and it dropped for all that time and it rose again. Now, if, if it stays down over the next few weeks, down to three, 2% or 3% or whatever, as opposed to being up there at 6% and 7%, is there, what's the significance of that? What, why would, and why would that be happening? That there'd be these crests of the positivity rate?
Right. You know, Commissioner Henderson, I, my feeling is that it moves fairly quickly, in part because it's very transmissible, but also the, the way we receive data, the way we case investigate, when we have clusters or when we have, you know, outbreaks, we've not had any large outbreaks fortunately, but we've had lots of little clusters or maybe you'd say small outbreaks like Mount Bachelor, for instance, would be, I guess, at this point, a smallish outbreak. But these things move very quickly. So, you know, if we had one more nursing facility where we went in for a period of a day or two and tested every, all the residents like we had done before with Mount Bachelor, you know, that would potentially increase the numbers of cases and the test positive, the test positivity rate very, very rapidly. So I think that's part of, there's lots of clusters, there's some small outbreaks, and they seem to happen quite rapidly. Or at least I would say, our, our, our coming to knowledge of these clusters and small outbreaks happen quickly.
So let me do one follow-up. So you're kind of saying that if we, but for the large outbreak or the medium-sized outbreak at Mount Bachelor Care Center there, we might have been at 3% and 4% through that period of time? Is that kind of what you're saying?
I think that's a fair assessment, yeah. We subtracted that many cases, right? We're tracking that now to 30 or so, I believe, you include the healthcare workers. So yeah, if you subtracted that many, the percent positivity would be, would be lower. I think that's right. I'm not sure if it would be 4% instead of 7% exactly. But, you know, we were about 100 cases a week for a couple of weeks there. So if you subtracted 30 out, that would be a significant drop.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Weren't there actually 64 positives from Mount Bachelor? So I don't know if they all flowed into the week of this 12th through the 18th, but I.
Right. Yeah, the, the, yeah, the initial screening, I think I'm getting, as I look back when we started to learn about them in the first 25, 30, and then the caregivers there. So yeah, I'm thinking about that week. That's true. That is spread out over a little longer period of time, maybe a couple of weeks. Because I think we're looking at, you know, week-to-week test positivity. I'm not so sure that everything at Mount Bachelor figured into one week. I can go back and look at that, though.
It would be interesting to know because, you know, 64 was really significant when we had 108, the one, you know, last week. And then we've gone down to 77, so.
Right. And I think, Commissioner Adaro, I think that the initial outbreak at Mount Bachelor, that was, I think, initially two weeks ago as we were sitting in here. Yeah. So the, the 108 would have accounted for some of those cases, but not all.
Well, I know the first positive, wasn't it about on the 11th of July?
Yes, right.
So who, who knows if it really got in there or if it didn't, you know, went into the next week. So if you can track that down, that would be great. Or Nahad, that would be helpful to know.
Yeah, that's helpful. I, I, I think we should do that. Thank you. Um, the next slide, if that's all right. This looks at hospitalizations day-to-day. And this is, it's listed at the bottom of the weeks, but they're separated by days too. And this is the total number of patients at St. Charles Health System Hospitals, which basically Ben, they cohort, there are COVID-19 patients in Ben per day. Each day, how many COVID-19 positive patients do they have? The peak looks like it was around July 23rd, July 24th, where they had 16 patients on those two days. And that's come down since then. However, looking at the emails from today, we believe we have 10 total patients at St. Charles Bend that are COVID-19 positive, four, four in the ICU currently. So that's come up a bit. That's probably going to continue to be a jagged shape of the.
Dr. Fawcett, is it not, though, it's not just Dushut County numbers you're giving us for St. Charles? Or is this Dushut County?
Importantness. Thank you for mentioning it. So the, the graph that we're looking at is all patients at St. Charles, not just Dushut County. So that, that's correct. As of yesterday, the total of Dushut County residents that were ever hospitalized was 44. So that's only a percent of the total patients hospitalized at St. Charles Bend, because many of them are not from Dushut County.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and we are in contact with the hospital. We're getting better at this, but we're learning more about the county of residents of each COVID-19 patient. That's data that they are accumulating and sending to us every so often. Okay.
Do you want to mention Mount Bachelor?
Oh, yeah. It's a jag, it's a jagged graph, yeah. So this again is, is looking at some of the demographics. And the take-home message here is that the highest percent of patients that are hospitalized tend to be those that are age 60 or above. That's the bottom, the very bottom bar there. And men more than women. Up on top, the, the top two bars, female and male. We do have, of all of our 548 cases, more women than men that have been diagnosed. But there's a significantly higher proportion of, of men who have been hospitalized with COVID-19. The same is, is true for the age breakdown, where, you know, we have a significantly higher number of patients diagnosed COVID-19 positive who are age 40 or under. number of patients diagnosed COVID-19 positive who are age 40 or under. However, the percent of them that are hospitalized is much higher than those that are 60 years old or, or older. So that trend has continued, and we do see that, to some extent, nationwide, and, say, in Italy and other places as well. So I'll give it back to Nahad at this point.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Okay. I'm going to introduce this next slide, and then, Dr. Fosse, you're welcome to chime in as well. Commissioner Henderson, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, you had asked about, so how does this crazy virus rank compared to perhaps other, call it, disease-causing agents? And I finally found this graphic that I think can help explain. This is a global, sort of depiction of the daily deaths. So it's not just, so US is included, but it's not just for the US or for our state, but it still gives us a good sense of what's going on. And some of these may or may not be relevant necessarily to our community or to even to the US. But generally, what we see is many, many deaths being caused on a daily basis by cardiovascular diseases, followed by cancers, respiratory diseases, and lower respiratory infections. And for COVID in particular, especially since mid-April to estimated until maybe mid-August, it seems like COVID-19 falls somewhere between the third and fourth category of respiratory diseases. And, and, and it seems like COVID-19 would not have been included in any of these categories anyway. So it's outside of these categories. But this is sort of a depiction of the, the disease burden that COVID-19 is causing globally. Dr. Fosse, would you like to chime in?
I think just to mention that this is preliminary, and that COVID-19 in general is a fairly acute illness. So the mortality from this, this disease usually occurs over a period of a couple of weeks to a month from the time of diagnosis. So if you compare that to cardiovascular disease, that's a very chronic type of condition, which may have, you know, lots of hospitalizations and may battle it for a couple of decades. So this is all early data, I guess, it's just my, my sense of that. But it's interesting that the size of, of, of impact and mortality is still ranking among the top three or four at this point, even early on.
And of course, as mentioned before, it's not just about life and death here. The recovery from this disease can take a long time, even, even in young adults with no chronic conditions. We've seen from our local data that it can take up to three months for people to recover. And from a national data, we see one in five previously healthy young adults went back to their usual health until two to three weeks after testing positive. So it's really not about just if a person's going to unfortunately die from this disease or not. It's also the recovery and the residual impact and the multi-organ effect that it has is quite alarming, and we should be all aware of that. And this is, I, actually, this slide just came in maybe 10 minutes before we came on. And I think it's really important for the public to know, and this is information from CDC, where during May and June, 15 people in Arizona and New Mexico were hospitalized after swallowing hand sanitizer containing methanol. So it's really important for us to make sure that we access the right information sources for our decision-making and we make the right decisions. Already, this virus is quite complicated, so let's not make it more complicated by some of the choices that we make. And, and, and this is just cautionary tale as to some of the decisions that have been made.
Nahad, it's probably an important moment to also remind people that a lot of hand sanitizers have been recalled. So if you're uncertain, you really need to look up that recall information. I believe there's like 80 different, 80 or 100 brands now that they're recalling it. And then the other thing is, if you have your hand sanitizer in your car and you have it all closed, it can get extremely hot, because remember, it has, what, over a 65% alcohol base in it? So those are just some of the little other side issues with hand sanitizer.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner. Thank you for that. Very good point. Okay, just a couple of slides before we wrap it up. Now, I believe that our community is aware that the school districts in our county have decided to start the school year with remote or distance learning, and I'm sure it has been a difficult decision for the school districts, and I certainly cannot fault them given the recent COVID trends in our communities. I do have some concerns, though, but I will limit them generally to public, primarily to public health, what I consider to be unintended consequences of this decision, which we should keep in mind and, and consider addressing. One is that I'm hearing anecdotes that these micro pods are springing up, where children will be brought together and looked after by a few adults, and they might be serving as daycare and/or perhaps learning centers. Now, my main concern is that these pods may not be necessarily following the safety protocols and guidelines, and, and really, that, at that point, the efforts of public health and school systems to mitigate transmission might be negatively impacted. So I suggest that these entities register with their respective chambers or equivalents and reach out to health services and other trusted sources for further guidance. My second concern is around immunization. Usually, there should be proof of immunization upon school entry, but I'm not sure the extent to which this year it will be monitored and implemented, given the decisions that have been made. Regardless, I think it's really, really critical that parents, guardians, they follow up with their primary health, primary care providers, pediatricians, with our department to really catch up all their children's immunization schedules. We don't want to deal with multiple war fronts this fall, for example, COVID and measles outbreak. And then one last point is that we can still change the trajectory of this virus transmission by our decisions and actions, and by October, the school system, the school districts could reopen if our county is meeting the reopening metrics.
Nahad, I think it's also an important message for the 364 Deschutes County people that have recovered, if they actually had COVID as a, you know, not, they were not asymptomatic, but they actually had symptoms. They can now donate their plasma, which I believe can serve, what, three people if they donate their plasma, and that can be done through the Red Cross. So it's really critical. I know people in St. Charles have been, have received plasma donated, so it's something seriously to consider. You could actually save a life.
Yep. Patricia, thanks for mentioning that. Many patients at St. Charles, I can't say how many, have received the convalescent plasma. St. Charles has been part of a program for treating with this, this modality for, for quite some time, a number of months. They also are taking part through one of their pathologists in the donation program. And we have actually helped them reach out to some of our recovered patients to let them know about the opportunity for, for donation. I haven't really been proactive with that, but there's been a very positive response amongst our residents in, in Deschutes County who have recovered in terms of they're, they're considering, if not actually donating their plasma. So it's something that we have been actively a part of.
I know. I think it's, you know, it's just something you can do, and it's, it's so important. It's just like blood donations are down. So you can make an, I think you can make an appointment online. So it's, you know, it's important.
I have a question, Nahad, and a little bit of discussion maybe with the other commissioners, too. It's, I guess that the school board here at Ben Lepine, which is one of the three school districts in the, in the county, but the largest, has decided not to do anything but inline for, I guess it's a month or two, I don't know exactly sure the timeline. My concern is, and I've had this voiced by, you know, residents and citizens out there that have kids, that, you know, this inline learning thing is, is kind of a myth, I think. It's great for kids that are, you know, great students, and parents that are great parents that have, you know, can monitor all this stuff, but for the vast majority of, of children, they're not going to get much out of this. So why aren't, why aren't we doing something else? And, and we already lost, I mean, to me, the people that grew, lost, most of the kids lost last spring semester. Now we're going to start with another semester lost, and, and there's certain kids that'll do well with it because they're so motivated, but the vast majority won't. I don't know. And then there's all the health issues with regard to just continuing to stay home. On top of that, then there's all the family issues with what do parents, single parents have, whether they have to work, what do they do with their kids? And, and school isn't anymore just a means of, of transferring information. School is a, is an alternative place where people go, get all sorts of various values, physical exercise, interaction with other people, et cetera. So I, I don't know if you, or Dr. Conway, or whoever have been involved in this, but this is not going to work. I mean, in my view, and we don't get in public policy of education very often, but there's, we represent the same people, and lots of them are not happy about this.
Well, Commissioner Henderson, I'd be happy to give the, maybe I can give the floor to Dr. Conway if he likes to chime in. I just, I want to say that every single word you said, I agree with, and I sympathize with those parents. I have twins of six years old, and they're going to be entering the school system for the first time, frankly, as first graders, and they're going to have to experience it through an online mechanism. And it's, and it definitely concerns me from all, you know, angles, from, from the social, from the education, from various levels. And, and we're fortunate in that maybe one of the parents can, can be home and look after them, but as you rightfully said, what are other parents going to do who are not in the same situation? So I definitely sympathize with you. I, I don't think from a education, perhaps expertise, I don't have the education expertise to comment on how online versus in-class could work, but, but if other colleagues here have anything to add, I don't know if Dr. Conway, you have anything to add, or Dr. Fosse?
Let Dr. Conway go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. Conway.
It's unfortunate that it's having this effect, the level of contagion that we're seeing in this society is having this effect. I don't think that anyone involved in any decision-making has advocated online teaching as preferable or equivalent. I think the most important thing is that because there are thresholds, that once we get below those, the schools can open, most important thing is that we should concentrate on reducing the general level of contagion. The way to do that is for people to very faithfully maintain social distance, wear masks, and only interact socially as absolutely necessary. So bringing that down, I think is the highest priority. The other thing is that while the original hope in the country was that younger children, based on some, some studies that were done in South Korea, that younger children might not be transmitting the virus as readily, age below 10, there's recent evidence which is showing that that is likely not the case. There's a very large outbreak in a, in a camp in the East Coast that was reported in MMBR last week, which showed actually slightly higher transmission rates in the younger children than the, than the, in the elementary school-aged children than the older children. So the unfortunate circumstance is that schools, as with businesses, are one of the places where there's a high transmission potential for COVID-19. So I think that it's, what the attempt that's been made is to strike the right balance about reducing general contagion, protecting children, protecting teachers or that workforce is older or has underlying illnesses, but also opening up as the level of contagion promotes. So I think that, that's the intended balance. I don't think, once again, other than maybe people that sell online software, that anybody is saying that, that online teaching would be preferable to real, real in-person teaching.
I do want to mention that the teachers of Ben Lepine were surveyed, I was told this number yesterday, and apparently 63% of them said they weren't comfortable in going back to the classroom. But the other thing you have to look at is the fact that the metrics the state has set up, if Baker County has one case, one case in three weeks, they have to shut their school system down. So I do believe that our people in Salem from the Department of Education need to look at the metrics they've set up. I think they are extremely, extremely difficult in order to actually get our kids back to school. So I know that teachers east of us really do want to get the kids back in the classrooms. They're, you know, a lot of their numbers are really manageable at this time, and our, you know, Oregon kids already spend one year less in the classroom per, you know, from K to 12. So, you know, I, they're falling further behind, and on, you know, online learning is not that healthy to begin with. A lot of parents already want to limit the amount of time kids spend in front of a screen, and it's, I think we're really looking at a lot of different things here, and it needs to have a better balance. So hopefully, people out there can do more for their kids than it seems to be at this moment. You know, school's supposed to start August, what is it, September 8th? And it doesn't sound like very many spots in the state are going to be able to start. So the numbers are just really, really unfortunate.
And I, I guess that's part of why I'm asking Dr. Conway and Nahad if, you know, anything you want to add. I'm, because I'm going to, beginning to think about this. I mean, if our goal is to, I don't know, wipe out this disease, which is what it seems to be, that we'll be happy when we have one case a week or whatever, it doesn't seem very likely that we're going to get there. I, I, you know, like, I'm surprised we're still, you, you made the point of saying this is still the first wave. Well, other pandemics, they might be on a second wave by now in the five or six months out. So we're, so we don't really have never seen indications where the wave is going to end. It's, it's more like constant ocean or something. So I, I just am concerned with that, if that's our primary and sole goal, to the, the shutting down may go on kind of endlessly, and that's what I'm, and it affects, right now, the next issue is, is children and families with children, but, you know, what's your thought on that? I mean...
I think that the, the goal is not to eliminate contagion, because it's not a practical one. The goal is to keep the epidemic pace low enough to be able to successfully contain it and to keep up with it. And we're really out of bounds with that. We're right sort of at the margins of what, of what we're able to do now with the current rates we have. Many of the Sunbelt states, now many of the Midwestern states have gone to a point where they're probably only going to be able to go back to have containment as an option by, by starting to shut things down, and we're hoping to avoid that circumstance. Basically, everybody's trying to suspend the minimum amount of human activity possible to get us all, or most of us relatively safely, to where we have vaccines and treatment. And there is a fair degree of optimism about that occurring, perhaps early in the year, next year, and avoid, if there's a vaccine, having widespread distribution and subfunctional herd immunity, if that will exist by the springtime next year. But in the interim, I think we're probably going to be cycling in and out of various levels of constraints on human activity and interaction.
Go ahead. Do you want to say, Dr. Fosse?
I want to add a couple of things, too. I, I think that, you know, the, the goal, of course, I mean, in, in general, is to do much better, and I, I do believe that that is going to happen. It's already happening in some states. You know, some of the success rates of other countries, I, jeepers, if you look at, I mean, South Korea is a good example, where they've had, they have, what, 55 million people total and 300 deaths, only 300. So I, I know we can do better, and, and it's a new, it's a new virus, it's, it's a new, it's... It's a new epidemic, pandemic. So we don't understand it as well as we would say swine flu, which, you know, pandemic influenza, we have some experience with that. So we're learning a lot about this, sometimes the hard way, with this first wave continuing, which is really unfortunate. I mean, honestly, for countries who have contained the first wave to some degree, even if it's just stayed the same, they are reopening the schools in a fashion that seems to be safer than what we can do in many states here. And I think, too, that schools do want to and must become more creative. I mean, there's more that we can do. You know, there's data on, back in 1918, how all these public schools were outside in the fall until the weather was too cold. There's a lot more we can probably do for onsite learning that will be safe and will be safer. So I think we're working on those things, and the goal, for sure, is not to have online learning continue into the spring. It's maybe not even through the whole fall semester. So I think we can, I just want to say, I think we can do better. I also want to add that I think even in central Oregon, that the burden of COVID-19 is significant. I see this in the hospital. Our hospital tends to function at near capacity just without COVID-19. Having to postpone elective surgeries has been very difficult. Even now, we have many patients that cannot get their surgeries done now. They've been waiting for four or five months. They need negative COVID tests, it's take a week to come back. It's really affecting the schedule. There's a lot of things going on with our medical care that is really being significantly stressed, even in an area like ours, which is not nearly as impacted as some of the Sunbelt states, for instance. So I just want to add that perspective as well.
Thank you, Doctor Fossett. That was helpful, and I do want to point out that one of our foremost concerns is the most vulnerable. And we have now had eight deaths and are counting, so we know that this can affect individuals in a grave fashion. There's three other things I wanted to try to update you with your permission. The first is an update on the long-term care facility circumstance. And then I have two questions, one I received yesterday from Commissioner DeBonne about hydroxychloroquine use, and then also some citizen input today asking about testing. So with your permission, I thought I'd proceed with talking about those.
Oh, I wanted to make one more comment, though, because on the page regarding reopening schools, it does show the positivity for 726 to 81 as 1.8. So if there is an error with that, please let us know.
Right away, because that's very important.
No, according to the latest data we have available, it's not a, this number, Commissioner, reflects the data we have available. It's not an error per se or oversight.
Well, it'll change because it needs to be updated with the latest results.
Exactly, exactly. So it's not a calculation mistake or anything like that. It's the latest data that have been input into the system. But we will definitely, every week, update the previous week data and reflect that in the slides that we present to you.
Actually, this ties in very directly to the issue, and I'll actually reverse the order I was going to talk about, and that is that the citizen concern that was voiced was about access to testing. And I have to say that this is a very real concern, it's a grave concern. There's very serious shortages in testing materials, particularly for onsite rapid testing, which is the best, because then you find out right away. There's also very substantial delays in test turnaround time. The largest national laboratory, Quest, I believe, is up to seven to 10 days in some markets. We're seeing quite long delays here. So our aspiration is that there be rapid onsite testing and that that be available on demand as soon as possible. It's unfortunate, for whatever reason, that our nation hasn't been able to organize that in a way that many of the other developed nations, such as South Korea, which has been mentioned, has. I'm hoping that that will change well before the anticipated wave in the fall with the change of weather, as well as the possibility of influenza outbreaks overlapping with this. So talk about long-term care facilities, and I'll come back.
So real quick about that testing, though. So I think the specific question was, why don't we advocate for citizens to get tested? And why do you have to go to a doctor and ask for an appointment and pay to get tested? And I think, you know, so the answer is, we don't have the capacity or capability to test for people that just want to know at this point in time. So, and this is where we started. You need to be showing symptoms to be justified for a test because the capacity of the testing system needs to be optimized.
Sure, sure. The other thing is that I believe there's also a hope that there'd be some coordination of this with primary care providers in case your test is positive, so it's not just a surprise and you start wondering what to do, so that you integrate it into that system. There can be a rapid response that helps with isolation and containment. Having said that, though, I mean, in the long run, I hope that we can have testing on demand. For example, there are now some states that require testing. For example, Alaska in particular, if you fly in Anchorage, you must have evidence onboarding your outbound flight that you've had a negative test that will be less than 72 hours prior to your arrival on the ground in Anchorage. There are other places that are doing such testing requirements. And there are also states that are constraining travel between each other for the same reason. I believe New York State is now constraining travel from 34 other states without certain pieces of evidence as well. So this is, it's moving along, but it's moving along much too slowly. There's no one happy about the pace of it, and I'm hoping that we really can get much better on this in the next few months. And I agree with Commissioner DeBonne that right now, we really are in a circumstance where we're rationing particularly the rapid onsite testing, which is quite unfortunate. The other, the long-term care facility status. We now have six facilities that we're following that have at least one staff or resident that's been diagnosed with COVID. When a case is identified, all staff and residents are tested. One case triggers the following steps and outbreak number, meaning a potential outbreak from DHS and outbreak number from the Oregon Health Authority. Public health, ourselves, O H A and DHS work with the facility on appropriate control and prevention measures. Positive staff are not allowed to work and must self-isolate until a public health nurse clears them as meeting the recovered definition, which is based on symptoms and time elapsed since then. Positive and negative tests are separated, and disease control and prevention steps are used. All negative staff and residents are retested each week. This repeats until there are 14 days with no new positives in the facility. We currently have 64 cases, roughly just over one-third staff and two-thirds resident in the largest facility with such an outbreak. And very unfortunately, six individuals have died in that setting. They were all on hospice prior to acquiring their, this illness. Five of those have been reported to O H A, and we don't know if the six will be released today or not. And this is a very substantial fraction of the total eight deaths that we've had in our county to date. That facility has begun retesting again, once again, this week. I think it may be a while before we see that facility free of this. Positive cases are isolating. We're working with them to determine when they're recovered. And essential staff that were negative are working with strict symptom monitoring, P P E, personal protection requirement, and weekly testing. The other facilities, we have one that has just one positive staff member with additional tests this week. Negative, there's retesting going on there. Another facility that has two positive staff members, and the first round of retesting has been complete, and retesting commenced again yesterday. We're waiting on the result. One other facility, there's two more facilities, one which has one staff member positive and additional tests all negative, and in an additional facility, one positive with retesting beginning Monday.
So with all those facilities, six facilities and all the testing, there must be hundreds of tests are going to those, are being done on those.
Yes.
Facilities, and that's a big chunk of what, combining that with the people that are getting tested for surgeries and things, that's a, that's a big body of tests, probably.
Yes, yes, it's a large volume, and we're, one of the things we're looking at right now is how to staff this. The appropriate thing for us to take as a measure now that we've had this scale of problems is, to the extent possible, testing all staff and residents in each facility each week for as long as we can.
That would affect the positivity of, we're calling the positivity of Deschutes County as such and such, a certain percentage. But a big body of who we're testing are these people, are people in long-term care facilities.
Well, well, actually, I think that in the case of an outbreak, we did have a bump in the testing, the testing positive rate, which Mr. Sodaro's already showed. However, as we're doing these cross-sectional screening tests, testing, the hopes is that if we find cases, those will be sporadic, and we won't see a large increase in testing numbers. The whole point of this is to be doing active surveillance so we can intervene as soon as there's a case in these facilities so that it doesn't propagate. And that would actually bring the testing rate down.
Well, I agree with what you're doing, and I'm not saying anything negative about that. I agree that doing the testing and the redundant testing or follow-up testing is good. I'm just saying, we're using the numbers from that as part of what Deschutes County is doing. At one point, I ran the numbers, I think it's four tenths of a percent was the amount of Deschutes County residents over the whole time that have been tested positive roughly. So if it's, if you're testing in a, in a group that has more than that, it kind of throws, we're making conclusions about the whole county based on a certain segment being overly, I'm saying overly tested, not that I mean bad way, but just more tests.
I do understand what you're saying, sir. However, the reason that we're doing extensive testing is to, for active surveillance, to prevent outbreaks. So we have had this one bump that substantially increased that, but I'm actually not that worried about doing this cross-sectionally, causing a real problem. If anything, I think it should be dilutional. On the other hand, if it's not dilutional because there's another outbreak that we're unaware of, I think it would behoove us to know about that. May I go on?
Yes. So actually, we've talked about testing six facilities. We have 24, so what's happening with the remainder then?
Well, thanks for your advocacy on this point, Commissioner. As is, I believe, been communicated to you, DHS and O H A have agreed to try to accelerate the testing for at least a portion of those. And then we're also doing our best to staff and commence weekly testing across the board. But that, it's going to take us probably another couple of weeks to stand it up.
Okay, all right.
Could I add real quick, just, Dr. Fossett? Commissioner Henderson, I think, I want to just chime in briefly there. If there was a way to figure out the test rate per individual patient, because as you're mentioning, some of the same patients are getting tested over and over again in these long-term care facilities, particularly Mount Bachelor. So I think I see what you're saying, that that's a sort of a separate data set. And so, in any case, that's an interesting question. I wonder if we can break that down. I can talk to Dr. Faith about that and see if we can break that.
I don't think we count people twice if they're retested. I think they're only counted once.
I would confirm that because I have heard that it's.
We are retesting quite a number of people.
Because we have the 1.8% rate, but we can confirm that. The other question, once again, thanks, Commissioner DeBonne, is about hydroxychloroquine and the persistence of the idea that this can be taken either for preventive measures or for, to treat COVID-19. And this actually was, there was a lot of enthusiasm early in the outbreak. This is a common arthritis drug, which can also be used for.
Lupus.
Malaria prophylaxis. And there was some preliminary data, I think it may have been out of France early in the outbreak, that there was some shortening in the course of illness. There was a lot of information about taking it as a preventive measure. There was a very large, the largest study done that was published this year, was published in The Lancet on May 22nd, showing effectiveness with and without amacrolide, which is a type of antibiotic against COVID-19 infection. Unfortunately, that study had to be withdrawn less than two weeks later by the authors and Lancet when it underwent peer review and scrutiny post-publication that did not, the data did not hold up. Since then, the FDA has withdrawn its emergency use authorization for treatment on June 15, citing that the preponderance of evidence showed that it was unlikely to be effective in treating COVID-19 and ongoing serious cardiac adverse effects and other potential serious side effects. There's also been a large study published in the New England Journal about the effectiveness for post-exposure prevention of COVID-19, and that did not demonstrate any effectiveness for that. So, A, the drug is needed and in limited supply for those that have the type of arthritis that requires this treatment, and for malaria prophylaxis. Secondly, it doesn't appear to be of any use for COVID-19, either treatment or prevention. And then the third is that this is a drug which is associated with some dreaded and potentially fatal cardiac dysrhythmias. So this is really not a prudent thing for people to be taking, nor to be recommending on social media or to their friends.
Yes, so we just had some comments recently where it should at least be tried or, you know, made available if somebody wants to try it. So that, so thank you very much for that research and that, you know, professional opinion, understanding that it has its uses, but this is not the place that it has proven to be successful.
Sure, and I did send, I did send each of you the sort of the literature search in background with much more detail, if you're interested.
Thank you.
So it is interesting because I do believe that's the drug they're using in India, and I do believe their death numbers are significantly low compared to their population and their, their population density. So, yes, to be continued, I'm sure.
I'm sure somebody else will be researching it, you know.
Yes, there is a study out of the Henry Ford out of Michigan that does actually, does support it. So there are different medical opinions out there, and everyone, you know, you need to be personally up on it, so please research those. Thank you.
I have to say that preponderance of evidence is very strong, not supporting effectiveness as far as, as far as with our regulatory agencies and our peer-reviewed medical literature in the Western countries.
Well, without getting too far into that, so I was listening, I heard someone yesterday was talking about the reason the FDA actually took it off the emergency list is that there's only so many slots on the emergency list that they can have for a disease or whatever, and so they wanted to leave that open for something that's being developed rather than something that existed. So I, I don't know if that's true, but I can't remember, it was somebody from the FDA or, anyway.
There is, there is a, there is a limit on the number of simultaneous EUAs that the FDA can issue and follow, part of that is because they only have enough staff to follow those actively. However, once again, their withdrawal of this one specifically cites that it was unlikely to be effective in treatment and ongoing serious cardiac adverse events and other potential serious side effects. So it was actively withdrawn rather than just a space maker or limitation or running out of the date constraint. So I think it's, I think it's very important to be emphatic about drugs that are promising. So remdesivir has been shown substantial progress in shortening the course of illness, and there is accumulating evidence that plasma transfusions with convalescent plasma from people that have survived COVID does appear to be helping. And there are vaccine trials taking place, a number of different vaccines, all of which I think are promising. So I think those are the right things to focus on, rather than. So I think those are the, the right things to focus on rather than, uh, sort of perseverating on something that's been tested quite extensively, shown not to be very helpful and potentially dangerous.
Well, thank you very much. At that point in time, it should, that's a perfect time to, um, end our talk today, but it's a great time to remind you that you do want to get your flu shot, um, starting September 1st. So, um, as the doctors did say earlier, please get your flu shot this year.
Commissioner Derrick, what did you?
Hopefully it will be the right, um, ingredients in it, you know, I know every time they, they guess, but it does make a difference. So for those of you who believe in vaccinations, please do get your flu shot. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting at this moment in time and reconvene at 1:00 for our afternoon agenda. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the, uh, emergency declaration.
Our Deschutes County Board of Comis, Commissioner meeting for, it's August 5th, and, um, we need to actually, um, first address the emergency order for COVID. Um, Dave Doyle, are you on the line?
Oh, gotta get her going. So this is extending the emergency, the state of emergency order of Deschutes County in coordination.
I don't see, is this screen working?
Hey Commissioners, I'm here.
There we are.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Dave.
So I don't know if I was in or if.
No, you just popped up just now.
Sorry about that. So what you have before you is Order 2020-047, which is extending the initial declared state of emergency. As we've noted with the other extensions, this is really just to make sure we don't have any gap where we aren't operating under a local declared emergency for purposes of funding and contracting. It's, it's not creating any new health emergency that doesn't already perhaps exist, it's just really a, a technicality so we don't find ourselves arguing with FEMA or the state or somebody a year and a half from now because there was a six-day gap, uh, between orders and therefore whatever we incurred during that six days, they're not going to reimburse us for. That's the primary reason for this. That and it, it does ease some of the contracting procurement, uh, processes, so I certainly when Sergeant Garabee and some of the other folks with the EOC are making purchases, it streamlines some of that as well.
And Dave, what is the order number? Oh, Dave, you, your sound is going away.
Commissioners.
When you get really close.
2020-047.
Twenty dash.
047.
Okay, alright, thank you.
He's got to put another quarter. Oh, there he is.
There you go. You aren't putting enough quarters in.
Sorry. Yeah, that, that's for a 30-day extension, obviously you could withdraw it at any time and, and, um, certainly as we get closer to that 30 days, which would be September 4th, uh, we would have it teed up again for your consideration for another extension.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have a motion for that? Any discussion?
Uh, well, so I'll move approval and we'll have a discussion, I, I have. So I'll move approval of, uh, Order 2020-047, 30-day extension of a state of emergency order.
I'll second it.
So, uh, yeah, I mean, I do like doing it 30 days at a time, we are truly, it feels like the emergency is here right now, so, but, uh, as I say, every 30 days we can look at it, uh, you know, for the citizens following, uh, and this is getting less, I don't know, shocking, you know, fact that we're just holding on to the existing emergency, which is what, uh, Dave just mentioned, uh, but yeah, hopefully we're going to be out of this at some point in the horizon, whatever that is, we don't know yet, so. That was just, just some observations and comments.
I know if it's 047 and we're now at, uh, 533, that was quite a while ago when it first started.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner, well, I didn't know if you may, want to make a comment. Okay, no comment. So Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Um, we now need to have Peter Russell join us. There he is.
Welcome.
Hope you can hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah, so what we're here for today is a first reading of Ordinance 2020-009. This implements the plan amendment you approved under the ODOT application, which is 24720 00138PA. Um, this allows, uh, our Deschutes County TSP text to be amended regarding two items. One is to add J-turns as an option to, um, the text language that dealt with a frontage road between Bend and Redmond, needing to precede a raised median, and the second removes language that Vandenberg Road be disconnected from US 97. Uh, the board held a public hearing on this matter on June 24th, closed the record on July 15th, um, and then deliberated and approved the plan amendments. So we're here for first reading and then we have to have second reading sooner than two, two weeks later. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question I had, Peter, was, um, I probably should have asked that earlier, this earlier, but I actually have never really seen a J-turn. I, I understand on a drawing what it looks like, but it's different than a U-turn or something, so is there a history in Oregon of using these?
The history in Oregon is short admittedly, the ODOT does use J-turns on US 101 south of Lincoln City, which is also a four-lane section. That's the only one I know of in the state, they're much more predominant in the Midwest. So this will be the second J-turn that I know of.
And I have used that one several times, so.
And you were here to testify.
I did survive it. I know, but I wasn't pulling a horse trailer, so that's going to be the other question, that these are going to be properly, um, spaced so that people have the radius to make those turns.
Is there a reason that we're the, the first region or whatever that's looking at doing this other than the one on the coast?
I think because our TSP has some very aggressive access management policies, and so also during the adoption of that TSP, when the raised median was talked about between Bend and Redmond, neighbors in the Deschutes Junction area, wanted to have a frontage road prior to the raised median to limit out-of-direction travel. J-turns are just another tool to limit out-of-direction travels, that's why we have it, um, before you today.
Well, we, we already kind of concluded we're supportive, so I'm, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, first reading ordinance number 2020-009, uh, by title only.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, um, first reading by title only and ordinance amending Deschutes County Transportation System Plan text to add reference to J-turns to language on fronting roads on US 97 between Bend and Redmond and delete text requiring Vandenberg Road to be disconnected from US 97. So, thank you, Peter.
Your, your other, um, task is to set the date for the second reading, I didn't know if you all.
Okay, in two weeks, you said?
Yeah, no sooner than two weeks, so I don't know if the, if you all are meeting on the 19th or, or not, or.
Yes, I do believe so.
Yeah, I'm game for the 19th if you are.
That sounds like a excellent plan.
All right, I will coordinate with Sharon.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, um, Will Groves? We're ready for the, um, rezon and plan amendment for the Lower Bridge mine site.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Can you hear me okay over there?
Yes.
Excellent. So I have for you today a work session in preparation for your meeting next week to consider signature and first reading by title only of Ordinance 2020-013. This ordinance implements the board's resolution intent to rezone, uh, that was Resolution 2009-035, uh, to rezone the west side of the Lower Bridge mine site to RR10. Uh, the subject property is sometimes referred to as the 410-acre area, and it's shown in your packet, uh, as the unshaded area within the dash boundary lying west of Lower Bridge Way. Uh, on April 9th, 2009, the Board of County Commissioners resolved to rezone this area from surface mining to rural residential upon the fulfillment of conditions listed in the resolution. And the, uh, condition number eight of the resolution of intent to rezone requires the board to rezone the property upon the applicant's completion of those conditions. Uh, of the conditions in there, only number one and two had not been previously completed. Uh, the applicant says satisfied these remaining conditions and requests that the board adopt an ordinance implementing the rezone in accordance with the resolution. So the, uh, the two remaining conditions had to do with environmental letters that were to come from the Department of Environmental Quality and the Oregon Department of Human Services, or, and both of those letters have been submitted, uh, by both the agencies and the applicant to the record. And with that, all of the resolution of intent to rezone conditions are complete, and the applicant has asked that you adopt the, uh, the ordinance. And right now in your packet, what you have is a draft version of that ordinance that the applicant prepared, and of course for your, uh, packet next week, you'll have the full staff-prepared version with, uh, adopting maps and figures and exhibits. Um, do you have any questions about the history about this or anything else I can do to support you getting ready for next week?
I'm so glad we had our field trip down to the area and, and I drive through it constant, constantly when I'm using Lower Bridge, so, um, I think that was really, um, relevant because it is 410 acres, it, what is it, on the west side?
Yes.
Is it Lower Bridge there or is that Holmes? Anyway.
Lower Bridge.
It's Lower Bridge there. Anyway, when you, um, consider that, it, it's really, uh, and there is that historic water tower, right? Or, and then, is the water tower considered historic on that property?
Uh, it, it is old, but it hasn't been identified as a historic resource.
Okay, there is historic writing on the other side of the road there. Um, yes, okay. Thank you, Will. Are there any questions?
Um, I was looking at the map, the second page right in your, so it, it's all in black and white here, so I was trying to figure out which is the 410 acre. Is it all?
It's right, you can kind of, you can see the road there. Oh, you're looking at that one, on this one.
What page is that?
It's just the 13B.
What, what page though?
Um, page.
Packet page. Is there a packet page?
13B is the packet page.
325.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
On the, on the top edge or the, yeah.
Yeah, 325 is on the bottom.
Okay. Okay, so the road is, it's everything on the west side of the road. So it's an odd-shaped parcel, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, okay. Now, um, so for next week, um, are we going to have, are we just going to discuss it and just make a motion, or is there anything else we do next week?
It's, uh, it's my understanding that nothing else is required, so next week I'm going to come to you with something very similar with what you did with Peter Russell, where I have an ordinance and, uh, going to ask if you'll consider signing it and having a first reading by title only.
Okay.
Um, Will, how many wells are they requiring to have left on that piece of property? Because I know there's a couple on the other side.
Oh, um, so I know that they, I, I only know part of this answer. So in the 410-acre area, a number of wells both historically existed and it's my understanding that some were drilled in order to test groundwater, and, but I'm not sure which, if any, are being, uh, retained or removed. Um, at this point, the, for the purpose of the rezone, there is no requirement that any wa, wells either be retained or removed, um, but I can look into that.
Actually, um, they have it in the letter from the Department of Environmental Quality.
Oh, very good.
We recommend that these supply wells be tested to confirm in the areas consistent with what we found in the investigation. So it doesn't say like test them, you know, every six months or something, but.
And so that would be a recommendation by the, uh, by the Department of Environmental Quality, um, so that's, for the purposes of what you're doing, that's not a requirement that's imposed, uh, that's part of this rezone or the resolution. Um, were there to be some residential development on this property, say a subdivision or something like that, we would be revisiting the issue about water supply and water testing, um, so that would become relevant at the time of development.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBonne, do you have any questions?
Uh, long history here, I've been through a few of the, uh, processes over the years, but this, this order that we're looking at, 2009, is even a few years before I was here, so, uh, it's, uh, you know, just long history of land use and we have gone through a few of these items together now. It's good to see the package complete and the proposal ready to, ready to get to a rezone. So no questions, though.
Wait, Commissioner Henderson?
No, I feel we're pretty up to speed, we spent a lot of time with it before, so.
We have, so, it's good. Okay, it sounds like we will be ready for next week, for that to be on our agenda on the 12th.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, and this is valuable, taking time together as a group to review this, I mean, it really is, even if we're reading the paper, it's just a opportunity for us to kind of kick it back and forth and see if there's any other angles we need to be looking at. So thank you for scheduling this pre-meeting.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate your time and, uh, to the extent you had questions, I could have talked to you at great length, but I know that you've read this material and are prepared for this, so, um, thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Okay, I do believe you are on the agenda next.
That's me as well, so. I know, you're going to get three of me in a row. So the, uh, the second item we have before you here is a request to reopen the record in the matter of the Thornburg Golf Course Site Plan Appeal. And, um, I want to give you kind of the short version of this before I give you the longer version of it. Um, as the board, uh, the board specified a post-hearing written record period, and during that period, there was some debate between the parties about if the materials that were submitted were appropriate during the various rounds of reopened records. Um, based on discussions that we've had with the parties and the applicant, um, there had been a general agreement that it would be helpful to have two additional documents that might not have otherwise been in the record be admitted by the board. So what I'm going to, uh, walk you through here is a order for you to consider an order to accept basically two pieces of paper and, uh, and then keep the record closed to other materials. Um, I'll go into some, I'll go into some detail now. Um, so you have received a request to reopen the record from opponents to the application, specifically Carl Anuda on behalf of Nensi Ghuls. Um, and the, uh, what triggered this is as part of the applicant's final argument, Liz Fancher, his attorney for the applicant, submitted objections into the record arguing that material provided by Carl Anuda, and that's, uh, Nensi Ghuls' attorney, uh, during the second open record period should be disregarded as improper rebuttal. Um, specifically what they're arguing is that the second record period had to, by its terms, had to be material responsive to those materials submitted during the first record period, and so the applicant is saying that the, uh, the opponents are disqualified from making these arguments at this time. On July 27th, Anuda submitted a response to that objection, saying that his material should qualify, um, and he submitted a, on the 28th, submit a request to the board that the record be reopened. On the 29th, the applicant submitted a response to these requests, uh, asking that the board, in fact, accept, uh, the response for the limited purpose of determining what claims, uh, can be included on rebuttal on which are not admissible, and also asking that, uh, you accept, uh, a specific letter that was previously in the record and rejecting a new argument that they believe is made with regard to a reservoir permit for the golf course lakes. And finally, the applicant asks you that, uh, that you address some of these arguments on their merits as well. Um, so staff has prepared an order in coordination with legal counsel. Uh, the order has three effects, it would accept, uh, Anuda's July 27th, 2020 response into the record for the limited purpose of determining if the claims made in the July 8th rebuttal are or are not admissible. It's asking if, uh, receiving the July 29th, 2020 applicant response as the applicant's only final argument in response to the new record submission, and it's also confirming that the written record remains closed to other submittals at this time.
So to summarize, the two parties have agreed to both of these?
The, uh, there have been discussions between. There have been discussions between the applicant and legal and the opponents and legal, and we have invited those parties to let us know if they had any concerns beyond the way that this order addresses it, and we have not heard any adverse response to how this is being approached.
I just worry about whether each side is kind of setting up a procedural error that does something or whatever, and I don't know how this becomes a stipulated agreement that... Maybe that's what the order does. Can you walk us through the order?
Certainly. And so, this is... This reopening of the record is intended specifically to try to head off at the path one of, you know, one of a procedural argument that might be brought up later. So, again, to circle back to the top, there was some disagreement about what documents should be admitted, and what this order does is it allows two, basically, arguments about prior materials that were submitted. So, materials were submitted, and then, when the record was not opened, parties continued to argue about what should be done about those materials. And so, what this order does is receive two arguments about those materials so that you can take a look at those arguments and decide, as part of your deliberations, what materials you're going to consider in evaluating and deciding this golf course application.
Commissioners, if I might, Dave Doyle here. I believe Adam's tied up in a tax hearing right now, so I'm gonna kind of pinch it real quickly. But yeah, Commissioner Henderson, to your question, I think the order in allowing this brief record reopening is actually... Minimizes some chance for some additional procedural claims, although certainly, you know, with the tortured history of this case, it's been around a long time, you know, one can't rule that out, and I do see Adam has zoomed in, so I'm gonna zoom out and let him speak far more intelligently on this than I.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I think what both Dave and Will have reflected is correct. I've had... Or exchanged several emails with both parties and had a couple of different conversations. At this point, I think their requests are more or less aligned, that they both are independently, but similarly, asking for the county commissioners to reopen the record to allow just the two-sided documents to be considered. So, it's not reopening the record for any amount of time. It is just to allow the appellant's response to the applicant's motion to strike to be included, and then, of course, the applicant always gets the final word. And so, they submitted what I would construe as a new final legal argument that is constrained just to this, these new issues, so that would be the second document that I think both parties agree should be included in the record. And to be clear, at this time, we're not asking for you to decide the substantive issue. The only thing that the order does is asking you to reopen the record for the... To allow these two documents to be included, and if you agree for those two documents to be included, then you will consider the substantive issue during deliberations next week.
Yeah, I like this solution. It's like a sub-conversation that happens during the record period, so this gets to closure for that... That, as I say, a sub-conversation, as in, somebody's requesting that that's new information at the wrong time, and now this resolves, kind of runs it to ground.
But it's... So, just so I'm clear, they didn't agree, like, a stipulation of both parties to let it in. It sounds almost like we're saying, well, if it's fair to let one in, it's fair to let the other in. Is that kind of where we're... But the parties haven't expressly said that, or said, "We agree to let this letter in," and...
No, the parties have not stipulated. Over the course of working with the parties to resolve this issue, they have, in essence, now submitted separate but very similar requests that the board reopen the record. But there is... Commissioner, to your point, you're correct. It is not a... I would not characterize it as a stipulation from the parties.
I guess I'm fine with it. It's hard to really know where it goes from there, for me.
Yes, this is what's... This started in 2005, 15 years later?
No, just 21 days ago for this open record period.
I'm talking about...
I know, I know. So, I'll move signature of order number 2020-045, reopening the record of Thornburg Golf Course Site Plan for the mentioned items.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Will. Now, Will, you're up again.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, I'm here now to talk to you about the appeal of the Thornburg Golf Course Site Plan. The board will be conducting deliberations on August 12th on the appeal of golf course for Thornburg. The board had conducted public hearings on this matter on June 17th. The record is presently closed following the post-hearing open record periods, and of course, the materials that you've just allowed into the record. Just to keep track, the 150-day period for issuance of a final local decision is currently September 6, 2020. So, in preparation for the deliberations next week, I have brought to you a memo that discusses sort of the key issues in the matter. And I want to just point out that the applicant, exhibit number 48, includes over 120 points of contention that the applicant walks you through kind of blow-by-blow. For the purposes of this memo, staff focuses on the key issues and interpretive matters that the board will be asked to decide in order to receive your direction for the drafting of a decision in this case. One of the things I'll be looking to you for today is to see if this level of engagement is what you find is appropriate. There's certainly an opportunity to take you deeper or more shallowly into the arguments made here, and certainly, you have received and can take a look at the applicant's final argument, appellant's and opponent's final arguments, where these are fleshed out in greater detail. But I wanted to, at this point, give you a orienting discussion about the primary issues in the case, and certainly, as we come forward into the deliberations next week, I'll have a standard matrix for you to walk you through questions in the format that we've typically done this. So, I'll jump in here, and then you let me know if this is... If you want more or less information. So, one of the first key issues here is if the county has jurisdiction to decide this application. As you know, there have been two appeals of the subdivision tentative plan for Thornburg, and those are on appeal at the state level. Opponents argue that the county lacks jurisdiction to act on this golf course site plan at this time and must deny it. The applicant argues that the case isn't in any way dependent on the tentative plan, and that the tentative plan approval doesn't bind this site plan review for the golf course. Staff has looked at these arguments and recommends the board consider concurring with the applicant, as staff agrees that the golf course site plan is not dependent on the tentative plan and that the golf course site plan can be decided at this time on its own merits. The second item before you next week will be compliance with Redmond Fire requirements. Opponents argue that there, even at the time of golf course construction, that there'll be significant fire danger coming from dry brush, and they ask that hydrants be required at this point and set out as conditions of approval. The fire marshal's remaining requirements, they'd also like to see those as conditions of approval. The applicant counters that the entire... Oh, also, the opponents were concerned that the entire golf course area hadn't been annexed into the Redmond Fire District. The applicant responds that the entire property has been annexed and that there's nothing required by Redmond Fire until they have combustible materials on site for buildings. So, there's no access needed, nor water, and certainly, no hydrants at this time that are required. Condition four of the decision requires that emergency access roads are required prior to final plat approval or the issuance of building permits, and this site plan doesn't include either of those. So, the applicant believes that the conditions are met without any further requirement. There's also... The applicant had a concern that the... There was a language on page 32 of the staff approval that required the applicant receive written confirmation from Redmond Fire that fire safety standards were met prior to construction, earthmoving, or clearing. Staff just wants to note that staff recommends the board consider striking that language on page 32 of the staff decision, as staff's concern was addressed adequately by the email in the record from Clara Butler, Redmond Fire. And staff notes that the applicant has confirmed that the subject property has been wholly annexed into the Fire District. Next issue you'll be looking at is the scope of the proposal, and opponents have raised a number of issues related to the recreational use of the lakes. And the applicant has stated that, at this time, the golf course is the only recreational amenity in the site plan. I think that this is a... So, now, from the staff perspective, I think some confusion came up, because I believe that there is some ultimate intent to have some recreational use of the lakes that are being included with the golf course, but that was not proposed at this time, and certainly, the things that you'd expect in a site plan, such as access to these facilities, parking, all those sorts of things, weren't included. And given that the applicant has expressly stated that the golf course is the only recommended... The only recreational amenity, staff has recommended the board consider a condition of approval limiting the recreational use of the site plan area to golfing and specifically precluding other activities, such as water sports and beach access, until such times these uses are approved and reviewed under site plan criteria. The next issue that you're gonna... You'll be looking at is the issue of collateral attack. And I'm gonna have to give you a little bit of background on the legal theory here of collateral attack. Luba has found, and the Court of Appeals as well, that where you have a decision that's rendered in stages, where you have a multi-stage approval process, that early stages can be final appealable decisions, and that in such cases, issues that could have been raised and weren't in earlier stages, or issues that were raised and resolved in the prior stages, can't be appealed in later stages. And the applicant argues that we're in just such a case, that the Thornburg Destination Resort is a multi-stage process, it's gone through conceptual site... Conceptual master plan, final master plan, and now, we've arrived at site plan review. And through the conceptual and final master plan, a tremendous number of issues have been dealt with, from wildlife to fire safety, and the applicant argues that the... That a number of issues that the opponents have raised in this case are, in fact, matters that have already been decided, and under Luba's theory of collateral attack, that those issues can't be raised at this point as specifically a collateral attack on those earlier decisions. The applicant has listed the issues they believe are precluded from further argument in their applicant's exhibit 46. Opponents argue that they have... The opponents have set out valid attacks on the applicant's assertions of compliance with the standards, and there's nothing impermissible or collateral about the challenges, that the challenges are firmly sounded in evidence and haven't been effectively rebutted by the applicant. So, for deliberations next week, staff recommends the board consider determining if the issues the applicant identifies in applicant's exhibit 46 are issues that could have been raised but weren't raised at earlier stages, and/or if there were issues that were raised and resolved adversely to the opponents in an earlier stage decision. If the board does conclude that, the board may conclude that these issues may not be raised at this stage with the golf course site plan. The... Moving on to the next issue before you, I think this is an easy one. This one has to do with conditions of approval of the final master plan misstated in the decision. So, the administrative decision had a... Had an inaccurate list of the conditions of approval of the final master plan. And as you can see in my memo, there are specific conditions that either have been found to be satisfied previously or misnumberings, and so, staff's going to recommend to you that you accept the applicant's corrections for the purpose of your decision there. Staff's unaware of any opponent arguments on this case. On that issue. Number five here, this is parking required for the golf course. This is one where staff actually has some particular interest in this one for presidential effects, and I'll go into that. So, the applicant argues that Title 18, Section 116030, off-street parking and loading, by its terms, does not require the applicant to provide parking for development of its golf course. This criterion says that off-street parking shall be provided at the time a new building is hereafter erected or enlarged, or the use of a building existing on the effective date of Title 18 is changed. And the applicant notes that this... Their current site plan includes no buildings, no enlargement of buildings, and thus, under the terms of 18116030, that no parking is required. And consequently, when no parking's required, no bicycle parking is required. Opponents argue that the golf course and lakes, that the application's incomplete because certainly, a golf course needs parking, and that these essential facilities can't be deferred to a later date. Staff recommends that the board consider not adopting the applicant's interpretation of 18116030. This is because there's many circumstances, such as parks, other outdoor activities, and food carts, where use will attract a significant number of new vehicles without enlarging or changing the use of a building. Staff recommends the board interpret the criterion question to specify at what time parking must be provided for new buildings, but not to preclude parking requirements for uses that don't involve buildings.
But if we were to do that, Will... Oh, you got more to read. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, this does create a problem, and I think we have a solution here. So, in addition, or in the alternative, staff is gonna recommend that the board consider finding that permitting a use through site plan that will require parking but doesn't provide any, isn't a safe environment, which is required under 18124060C, and would not provide the separations between pedestrians and moving and parked vehicles required under However, since the applicant has provided... Proposed to provide parking for the golf course as part of site plan review for the clubhouse and other facilities under future site plans, staff recommends the board consider requiring conditional approval precluding golfing or other recreational use of the golf courts and lakes until parking has been reviewed, approved through site plan review, as well as constructed. So, the staff's solution to this problem is, you know, the applicant has proposed a golf course with no parking, which presumably, no one can use until such time the clubhouse and the parking are provided. So, by precluding the golf use until that parking's provided, staff believes this resolves this issue. This would allow the board in the decision to make findings that the golf course has conditioned to the use that requires no parking or bicycle parking at this time. The board should also consider finding that in the alternative, to the extent that the present decision is deferring determination of compliance with parking standards to a later proceeding, that later site plan review will be required and will provide full public right to participate. So, one of the things that Luba's been concerned with over time is if the board's going to put off making a decision about some aspect of a proposal, that that later decision is one that the public has a right to participate in, and that's certainly the case here.
So, you're... Basically, you're just... This is all just about the timing of the parking plan, right? I mean, do you have to do it when you submit the golf course, or can you wait until you're getting ready to build the golf course, or you're building the clubhouse that goes with the golf course? And that's what you're talking about, essentially? Because everybody would agree you need parking.
Yes, I don't think there's any debate on that point, and certainly, the applicant intends to provide parking. I think the concern staff has with the applicant's approach is that they're reading 18116030 to say, if there's no buildings, you don't need any parking. And we certainly have had this argument brought before us before, for, for example, if you wanted to have a soccer field that had taco trucks and portable restrooms, that, you know, because they're under this criterion, you might read it to suggest that if there's no buildings, you don't need any parking. And, you know, in that... In those cases, you may see dozens or, you know, 100 cars show up, and there's certainly just staff's thinking, need to be some sort of plan for that. So, staff believes the applicant's on the right course and just is suggesting a different solution to that problem.
So, could you define parking a little better, as in, if somebody puts some paint on the grass in a football-field-sized area and said, "There's a lot of parking right there," or is parking referred to as a gravelled area at least, so it's a multi, you know, weather surface, or does it have to be asphalt? You know, could you define what the vision is there?
Oh, certainly. So... So staff believes the applicant's on the right course, and just, it's suggesting a different solution to that problem.
So could, could you define parking a little better, as in, if somebody puts some paint on the grass in a football field-sized area and said, there's a lot of parking right there? Or is parking referred to as a gravelled area at least, so it's a multi, you know, weather surface? Or does it have to be asphalt? You know, could you define what, what the vision is there?
Oh, certainly. So, chapter eighteen one sixteen talks at great length about what's required for parking. So as soon as you acknowledge that there is a parking requirement, there's requiring that the parking, the parking surface be all-weather, which is gravel in the rural county and paved in the urban unincorporated areas such as Sun River and Caribon. There's requirements for the size of the spaces, the size of the aisles, the visibility requirements at the intersection with the road. So all the usual things you'd see in a parking lot would be required.
So an improved area, all-weather surface, with ingress, egress, safety, and flow, and size? Okay. That helps.
Not seeing any other questions, I'll move on to the next item. This is the matter that we were just dealing with, which has to do with documents filed by opponents during the rebuttal period. So as you, as you completed in the previous order, you reopened the record to receive two argument documents from an opponent and from the applicant regarding what materials should appropriately be in the record. Just to reiterate this, there were materials submitted by Carl Anuda during the rebuttal period to which the applicant objects, stating that those materials were not properly, were not submitted during a proper time that they could be received. And the, Mr. Anuda argues that no, in fact, that these are documents that you can receive and, and take notice of. So you have agreed to take, take those documents in, and based on those, the applicant has asked you to consider the history of the files that were submitted and to make some decisions. Specifically, the applicant has asked you to first consider Mr. Anuda's, Mr. Anuda's rebuttal materials, and first find that they were not appropriately submitted. That argument is based on the fact that in order to be submitted during the rebuttal period, Mr. Anuda's documents needed to be responsive to documents submitted during the first round of open record. Said another way, there were three rounds of open record, and those materials submitted in round two needed to directly address those materials submitted in round one. Mr. Anuda used round two as an opportunity to express some concerns about water permits, and specifically, if the lakes needed reservoir permits from the Water Resources Department. And he argues that those materials were properly filed because the applicant, in their round-one materials, included the board's original conceptual master plan for Thornburg, which included a, a one-sentence note that there would be recreational lakes. One of the things that'll be before the board next week is if this tenuous connection in the first round allows Mr. Anuda to make a, make a, a new argument about reservoir permits. The applicant argues that, in fact, that that's not the case. The applicant makes a second request of you, which is, even if you decide that the, Mr. Anuda's argument was not timely, and that you reject it, the applicant also asks you to evaluate the question on its merits. And so the question specifically is, are reservoir permits, is the county required at this time to review and see that the applicant has received reservoir permit? And the applicant argues that, no, that's not in fact a requirement of this condition, or of this, of this application, that the site plan's subject to certain rules, and none of them require showing of the reservoir permit. The applicant further argues that their existing permits cover this issue. So that'll be something that'll be in front of you for deliberations next week. The next issue that'll be in front of you has to do with the Americans with Disability Act, the ADA Act. Opponents were concerned that this is, golf course is open to the public, and its recreational assets have to meet ADA criteria. The applicant in response provided applicant's exhibit seventeen, which includes the ADA guidelines for compliance by the U.S. Access Board. It has some specific discussions about what must be provided with regard to golf cart paths, prepared surfaces, and other issues. And staff recommends that the board consider including a condition of approval specifying that the applicant's exhibit seventeen, which includes the guidelines for ADA compliance, be included as a condition of approval, so that the applicant is assured of meeting ADA requirements. There were some additional arguments about the beach, and about ADA access to the beach. And to the extent that the board accepts the approach of issuing a condition of approval precluding recreational use of the beach until that's fully vetted in a future site plan, the ADA issues go away in that case as well, and don't need further evaluation. Two more issues.
Not very much detail in this case, is there? Man.
Yes. Two more issues. So the submitted site plan, the opponents were concerned that the submitted site plan did not, does not show how vegetation in areas adjacent to the golf course will be protected and retained. That's a condition of eighteen one twenty-four, that vegetation that's not in the developed area be protected and retained. And the opponents argue that this needs to be vetted at this time, how preserved trees and shrubs will be protected. The applicant argues that they provided substantial detail in exhibit forty-six, how this issue was resolved by the far broader standards in the conceptual and final master plans, including the Wildlife Management Plan, and the Natural Characteristics Report, and the Wildlife and Habitat Report, and the Open Space Management Plan. And that extensive analysis has gone in this regard. The applicant also states that the areas outside the golf course freeway is covered by Condition thirty-four of the final master plan, which deals with the restoration of disturbed native vegetation. Also, the Wildlife Management Plan, which is submitted as applicant's exhibit thirty-eight, deals with the timing and when restoration efforts will take place. Staff recommends the board consider replacing the existing finding in the administrative approval to match the applicant's argument above, which is more detailed and more responsive to this issue than what the original staff decision included. And finally, water rights and water issues. So this is, I'd say this is the core of the argument between the parties in this matter. The final master plan include a Condition number ten that required that the applicant shall provide, at the time of tentative plan and site plan review, for each individual phase of the resort development, updated documentation for the state water right permit, and an accounting of the full amount of mitigation as required under the water right for that individual phase. And the parties disagree significantly if the applicant has provided the, the updated documentation and accounting. The applicant notes that they've submitted exhibit AAA, which is the mitigation debt table, which shows mitigation requirements. In the tentative plan decision, hearings officer Olson found that this was an informational requirement, and a requirement for the accounting of mitigation needed for the water right. The board in the tentative plan remand noted that the mitigation would be required before pumping water for the phase. And staff also noted that the mitigation debt table, which details the amount of mitigation needed for the site plan, was consistent with the board's other decisions. Opponents argue that although the resort holds a permit for water rights, which has not yet been canceled, that the permit has expired and no extension of the permit currently exists, and that the applicant has admitted that an extension is needed before it can use the permit. So in short, the, there is currently insufficient water available for the resort for its proposed use. And they also challenge the water accounting for neglecting additional water demand such as reservoir evaporation, construction dust suppression, and irrigation demands likely in the high desert. Staff has reviewed these arguments and recommends that the board consider finding that the applicant, applicant has in fact provided the required documentation and accounting under final master plan Condition number. And that concludes those issues that I wanted to bring to you today in advance of your deliberations next week. I'm certainly available now to ask any questions, or to receive any areas that you'd like me to direct you to provide additional information. As you review the, as you continue to review the record, to the extent that you want to dig into any particular issue, I'm certainly available for that. As I said at the outset, these are the primary issues that are in, in debate between the parties, and that, at your deliberations, the goal there is for you to give staff and a, some direction on how you like, might like to see a decision drafted. And to the extent that you want to weigh in on other more detailed issues, I'm certainly available to brief you on those, or for us to go into more detailed deliberations.
What's the status on the, the other case that's, that's at the Supreme Court? Any word on any of that?
The last I heard is it was queued up for mid-September.
And when, when does the one-hundred-and-eighty days, or one-hundred-and-fifty days run on this, again?
September sixth.
September.
September sixth?
Yes. So, we're going to have to do something before the Supreme Court rules.
That's correct.
Was it one-hundred-and-fifty days, or one-hundred-and-eighty?
I think it was one-fifty, I thought. Yeah, it's one-fifty.
It's one-fifty.
Commissioners, the oral argument is scheduled for September fifteenth, and then, as you know, the Supreme Court could take many months after oral argument before they issue the final decision. So I think almost certainly, you'll be in a position where you're making a decision on this application prior to that decision being announced.
So actually, the sixth is a Sunday, so we'll have to have this pulled together by the fourth of September?
That's correct. And based on the available meetings and the tentative calendar, that looks like that's a hittable target, assuming that the board deliberate on the twelfth, provide direction to staff. Staff would work to get that back to you in a packet by the, by the nineteenth, so that you could, on the twenty-sixth, adopt, hopefully adopt the decision.
I think, don't, we have about three binders on this? I think I do.
Yes, you have over two thousand pages.
Yes.
In the record for just the golf course application.
Have those been updated yet, Will?
Yes, those are current.
Okay. Because I have, all right. I have them right there.
I made a shelf for a couple of the land use issues we have right now.
Okay.
Great, yeah, there's a couple items I may call you on here, but looking forward to diving deeper into some of those topics, and thank you for having the memo with kind of the analysis of both sides and staff opinion on each of those at this time.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I definitely am available for your calls, and to the extent you want more research or details, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, Adam?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let's see, we, I sent out some red line changes based on your comments to the marijuana opt-out ballot ordinance, or excuse me, order and exhibits. And attached in today's packet are clean versions of those, or clean, clean documents, i.e. the red lines are all accepted, of those new versions. Since that time, I also received comments from Nancy Blankenship recommending some very minor proposed changes to exhibit B. And I believe Sharon has copies of those red lines, or perhaps has already handed those out to you. And so at this point, we're looking for any further edits or comments that the board may have, or if there are no further edits or comments, I would recommend that you consider approving the order with the two exhibits.
I had one small question on the notice of the major election under summary. You use the word, after marijuana producers, you use the word grows, and that may be right. I was thinking growers, but, because we're using marijuana producers. Did you, I think I said growers, but did you decide that was better to put grows?
No, I, no, that wasn't a purposeful or substantive choice. If I misunderstood or misheard your direction on that, that's, I apologize. We could certainly put growers, or...
Well, I don't know if there's any magic. I just, yeah, I was wondering maybe if you'd come up, I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, grows versus growers, or does it matter?
Okay, so here they have producers with grows in parentheses?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, under...
To me, it seems pretty clear.
It's, it's odd, I, I would certainly point to, I mean, so marijuana producers is the term used in state statute and in your original opt-out ordinance, and that would, I think, intentionally refer to the applicant. Same thing with processors. But then, for the third category, it's processing sites. So statutorily, the, the terms are not consistent. Some of them refer to the applicant, and some of them, I think, refer to the location. But I, I do agree grows is, I think, more directed at the location, and producers is the applicant. We could, we could put growers.
Yeah, whatever you think, really, I'm, I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling you're right, so. It was the only change offered by Nancy Blankenship on the explanatory statement.
Yes.
Denial of this ballot measure.
Yeah, I capitalized ballot measure to be consistent with the final paragraph. Her recommendation was to just clarify what denial of this measure means, by either stating a no vote, or the more simple amendment that she...
I like that, yeah, I think it does make it clear.
Clarify.
Because when we start using denial, and uphold, and all those things, it's kind of like, that's where it goes into confusion, so I like a no vote.
This is much clearer with that, just adding that. Thank you, Nancy.
Well, I'd move approval of the languages proposed.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I would recommend, in terms of just the form of the motion, that you're approving order number twenty-twenty dash zero four one.
Okay. I move approval of order number twenty-twenty day zero four one.
I'll sec...
And do I need to say, and the attachments, or something, or?
Certainly can.
And exhibits A and B, as proposed.
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Thanks for doing it. I, I think it's good that we spent the time, I, I think it, hopefully, will help.
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Henderson?
I vote yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you all.
Eric?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. I'm here for the continued discussion about the possible elimination of vacant positions. The board has three different reports. I'll give a quick summary of, of each report, because they look a little bit different than they did last week. Last week, we ended up with, with a lot of colors, and too many colors, that it got a little bit confusing. So the first report in the packet is the positions that have already been eliminated by the board. These total ten-point-seven-five, and those, these positions are designated in green. You've seen that, that report, so that, this report really hasn't changed. The next report has positions categorized in blue, and also pink or salmon color. These are current vacant positions that are not, have not been approved to recruit or hire. The positions categorized as blue are those positions in offices of elected officials, and then, the pink or salmon color ones are those positions in departments with appointed department heads. They total twelve-point-five positions. But I would like to note that the very last position on this list, there's a point-five position in the sheriff's office that is a behavioral health program manager position. And then, that position is being proposed to be eliminated by the sheriff. It's part of that, when, when the sheriff asked in the budget to add two additional behavioral health positions, he also included in his budget ask to eliminate the point-five. So adding those positions would be offset by the elimination of this point-five position. That was not approved through the budget process, but the sheriff's office came to the board a couple of weeks ago, and the board, on a two-to-one vote, conceptually approved those changes. and the Board, on a two-to-one vote, conceptually approved those changes. What will come to the Board soon is a resolution that makes the budget change to that transaction. So I just wanted to point out that this last position is included in that other package of positions. And again, the sheriff is proposing to eliminate that .5.
So would that, move that to 111.25?
It's, it's really up to the Board whether or not the Board would want to count that as an additional elimination.
I kind of read the email from the sheriff that maybe it was, it wasn't even part of the consideration, or it wasn't supposed to be part of the additive, or, I don't know, I don't, it didn't, so.
And then the third report does, has the most positions listed. None of the positions are, have color on them. These are positions that have been approved for recruitment or hire, or they're positions that are 100% grant-funded. Majority of the positions on, on this vacancy report are Health Services Department, which are the positions that are 100% grant-funded, and the Sheriff's Office. You'll see a lot of deputy sheriffs assigned to corrections and also deputy sheriffs assigned to patrol. And then, the cover sheet of the staff report just kind of gives us a summary of the original target of 1.5% of all FTEs, which represents 16 positions. It shows that we, the Board has eliminated 10.75 positions to date. And then it also breaks down that 1,073 positions by those in elected offices and those in appointed department heads. And shows a calculation, if the Board chose to take 1.5 positions of the appointed department heads, how many that would be. So that's just reference information for the Board. And that concludes the overview of the reports.
So it is interesting that in process, now two hire and grant-funded totals 88.1 employees.
Yes.
It's on page 5 of 6, the total. So it looks like we're looking for a lot of people out there.
Well, part of them are grant-funded.
Right.
Part of them are untouchable, and part of them are ones you've, you've told them, okay, go ahead. Isn't that basically what we're saying?
Right.
Me or the Board. The Board has sort of suggested that certain positions have option forward, the ones that Health had recommended moving that they believe were critical. Yes, that's basically correct.
Our, our election supervisor this morning mentioned that it was really important. She may need to hire some temporary, or she will need to hire some temporary help during the presidential election. And so she does currently have a vacant spot. She realizes she doesn't want to fill it, but she doesn't want to lose it either. And she may have a couple employees in November that won't be available, so she knows she's going to definitely need that temporary help.
I support, yeah, our Clerk's Office in preparing however she needs for this fall's election. Temporary election workers, she's got a group of people that have done it many times over the years, but also adding the next person or two, or, you know, however the staffing works temporarily for this election process. So, yeah, those are, those wouldn't even be FTEs in our system, other than, you know, future temporary hires.
There is a position from the Clerk's Office listed in the color, the report with colors on it. It's the Admin Support Technician, and is a limited duration position to help with succession planning.
And we discussed that during the budget process, the fact that that's a position that, well, for passport processing and the documentation, the recordings, there's, it covers it. You know, the activity of the office covers that, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, as I've said in prior meetings, to me, this reminds me of trying to cut a budget for building a house. The only way you can do is you have to take a little bit from every category. You can't take it all in one or another. And so we've got some big departments that really haven't, don't have anybody, you know. If we're trying to do it proportionate, we'd have a couple from this department, and maybe one from this, one from that. We get the rest of it. Commissioner DeBonne, you've said in the past you were happy the 1%, and I've kind of pushed back that, well, the Budget Committee wants us to go to 1.5%, but I'm almost convinced to go with your approach, unless the Budget Committee tells us that we need to go to the Assessor, the DA, then the Sheriff, and gets, and a clerk, because there's none from any of the electeds that are on these. And it's, that's probably, that's probably, the other six positions could all come out of those departments. And we're not, it's like we're not making budgets for them. We're not, I haven't talked to any of them about it. Now, we could draw straws, and one of us could be tasked with going to each one of them and saying, we need two people, give me, give us two people. But I think that's the problem we have, you know, we have here. If it's not equal, and the Budget Committee, when we set this, I think it was intended to go across departments. And I don't know if that's how you got to 1%, but that's basically what it is.
Naturally, the 1% kind of fit. I just, I remember during the budget process, you know, it was, we looked at the total FTE count and the numbers held on by departments, and, I mean, the 1% was put out there originally, remember? And then it-
I don't actually remember how we got to 1.5%, but-
Oh, so, I mean, that was the moment. Mike Meyer mentioned 1%, I think we all started to see this. The request probably, you know, I think it came from you originally, let's look at lowering the FTE, get a smaller budget. And 1% was, you know, we calculated that this would be X amount of positions. And Mike Meyer had made the motion of 1%. And then you, again, you had said, well, why don't we do more? And he said, well, fine, 1.5%, and then it just kind of went. So we went from 1 to 1.5 without much thought. And as I say, and then we came back and looked at the numbers, and I supported the concept. Let's make sure we're putting a budget together this fiscal year that's not growing just because it needs to grow. Let's take a fine-tooth comb and look at our FTE and our budget. You know, publishing to the world that we're publishing a budget that's not growing at that 3 and 5%. You know, I mean, the right concept was put out there, the concept I support at the Budget Committee meeting. But, yeah, getting from 1 to 1.5% is quite a step. That's what we're finding out.
Well, only because we're not, we've got 400 employees that we're not even thinking about.
Oh, yeah, so 379, yep.
To me, to get to 1.5% would be very easy if all the departments were part of our consideration.
359, yeah.
And we've talked about this, what, five times now? And we've never come out of the meeting with a plan. We drew straws, and you're going to go to one elected, but we don't have the DA, we don't have the Assessor, we don't have the Clerk, we don't have the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
None of them have offered up, and, anybody. And so, to me, if we really were in charge of all those budgets, which it seems like we aren't sometimes, you would do what you do in a business, is you'd go to each department and you'd say, you know, when General Electric used to cut 10% of employees every year, that was their business model. And that, and they, it's how they got so efficient as a big company.
But look what happened to them.
Well, that was, no, but that wasn't because of Jack Welch, though. That was because of Jeff Immelt. It was because of his Assessor. But I'm, the point is, if we're going to do this exercise correctly, we should include all departments. And unless there's some feeling, I'm not really going back and saying, oh, I was, you know, 1.5 is too many. I'm just saying, we're not working with the full deck.
Yeah. Well, I think that one, so I would say 1% is the right number, and we got there. Removing some other positions, FTEs, is, yeah, more counterproductive, or, you know, I'm trying to figure out the words there. At this point in time, the whole organization knows that the discussions happen. It's come back a few times. We looked at it a few different ways. The spreadsheet was colorized and sorted a few different ways for us. Thank you very much. You know, at this point in time, with COVID and coming into the November election, having a strong, stable, confident workforce level of government, Deschutes County, providing those services without having to, you know, kind of question what tomorrow is going to bring, at least reducing the variables a little bit for our staff and ourselves, is probably a great place to be in the near future.
I guess I look at next week and the fact that, what, we're having a session next week for the legislature. I feel like 1.5%, when you've got over 1,000 employees, really is totally immaterial when you look at the cut numbers elsewhere. You know, it's going to be really impactful when we see what does happen with the state funding. And what are they, 2.7 billion short? You know, we're going to know more probably, what do you think, the first of September, where the state funding is going to really come through to Deschutes County. And at that point in time, yeah, I mean, I-
So then come back and look at it after that?
Right.
Well, my point is that I disagree with you about kind of ignoring what we decide the Budget Committee just, I think we should do what we said at the Budget Committee. But we're, the way we need to do it is include all the departments.
It's got to be fair, yeah.
And so unless we're going to push for that, I'm okay with pausing on this until we see what the state comes up with. But I don't think we're asking that much for people to look at this. And I don't know, how many, how many employees more do we have this year than last year? Would it be 1,073, you know?
Yeah, what was our?
Well, since the budget, we've even added now. It's just always dynamic like this.
No, but it's good to know. Okay, are we trending up?
Yeah.
We're trending up again.
Yeah.
We, we honestly did not add only a handful of what I would consider non-pandemic-related or non-grant-related positions. We can get you a final number. You have authorized quite a few more, but almost all of them were related, were big chunks related to big grants that we received. Or were directly involved in the pandemic response with contact tracers and so forth. So as far as our core business, you know, last year, you're-
Can we pull that number out for us, Tom?
Yeah, we can.
Pull the number out and then put the COVID number, you know, and just-
And all of those are submitted to you individually as part of the budget process, so I, we don't-
No, but sometimes you need to look at the big picture, you know, that's when we're comparing ourselves to other governmental agencies. And is what, is how I feel. So, yeah, it's a big picture and a, the forest and the trees.
Well, and, yeah, the state legislative process, we could have some very dynamic times coming up in the near future if the state budget, you know, and that's what they're talking about, is, you know, a certain amount from across the Board, plus specific choices going to be made. The legislative session is going to happen in about a week, week and a half.
Yes, next week.
Yeah.
The 10th.
Well, they have a big problem because they gave themselves, Governor gave them 15% raises two years ago. So that's one of their big problems.
Just to add, what I've seen in my 13 years here is, is if and as revenue decreases for departments, departments, good management practices is they hold vacancy, vacancies, and they cut positions. For example, during the recession of the 2007, '08, solid, solid waste revenue went down significantly. So Tim Schumpke came in to the Board and said, we need to change our model and, you know, decrease the number of hours we're open and cut positions. Similarly, in CDD, as revenue went down because building permits were not being pulled, CDD eliminated, what was it, 1/3 of the department over? 2/3, over a couple of year period because of the revenues going down. So as, as departments are impacted by decreasing revenue, and you'll see that in, in the monthly reports with Greg Munn, you know, that, that's a good conversation to have with those departments, if, if they see revenue decrease.
But some of them aren't subject, I mean, they're an enterprise fund, so they, they're subject to solid waste. But a lot of our departments, some are general fund completely, some are, you know, mostly state funds. So they, it's, yeah, it'll be interesting to see, but a lot of them aren't necessarily-
And did you see the, the development numbers, you know, the total, total, you know, housing or whatever, number was down a little bit, but the value was up again. So we're, you know, we're seeing the tax base expand once again.
And I agree with that. I mean, I think that the building, you know, what I was worried about three months ago, about what might happen with building, I don't see that happening now because of this demand to move to places like this actually was accentuated by, by what's gone on in the, in the country. What I'm, now what I worry about is if the economy itself doesn't get back. I mean, if we just, other things just slow and slow.
Tax participation rate, yeah.
You know, and, and all the way around, and, and so. Why am I going to suspend this for, for a few weeks? Are you okay with that?
I think that's a good idea. I don't think it's something that we, we say we're not going to do anymore because I do feel it's important. And then we'll see if we regroup and move that 1.5% over at some point.
Go to 2% like Commissioner DeBonne asked?
2%?
Oh, wait a minute.
No, I meant the point, the point lie from the Sheriff's Office, if, I have to think about that one, so.
Just kidding.
Anyway, 2%? Oh, gosh. No.
Yeah.
But just the 1.5.
It's just got to be, it should be fair.
So there's no action on this item, but you want it brought back a couple weeks from now specifically?
September. We should know more what the state is actually doing the next couple weeks. Listening to Senator Johnson, you know, she's got two other partners with Ways and Means. And it's, and it's interesting because first they were going to have the meeting, and then they weren't, and now it got flipped back to next week. So I'm thinking things may be worse than, because they were going to put it off for a while, and then it got pushed, you know.
Oh, you think that's why they're moving forward with the August meeting?
Yeah, why they're moving forward with it next week, because I think they realize that they can't keep ignoring the writing. And, you know, do they have enough reserve funds out there? I don't know. And I'm still getting requests from our community for unemployment and PUA. There's still people out there that are struggling in our community to get those funding, those funds, that, you know, they promised they'd send them a $500 check, and, you know, it's just not-
Did they ever give the 500?
You know what? I have not heard about anybody getting the 500.
I was told by one of the senators that they were held up on it. It was one thing for the legislature to pass it, it's another thing for the Governor to do it.
I, you know, I'll ask, because I hear from a lot of people who, you know, they get it for a little while, and then it stops again. Like, why does it stop? It's, it's hard to know. So, so we're now, thank you, thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for the new charts. They look good.
You're welcome. HR did a lot of work on this.
Yes, they did a fabulous job.
And Kathleen.
And I want to thank Megan for doing my binder, because it's the best. It's all, I've got it in order now, so, thank you, Megan.
I just keep clipping them to a bigger, bigger binder clip.
Yeah, no, this is, you know, it helps when you go back historically, but it's definitely cleaned up a lot more now. So that's helpful. Do we have other items, Commissioner DeBonne?
No other items that I brought today.
Commissioner Henderson?
I think.
Yeah, let me see, what did I do yesterday? There was-
Well, that movie, Friday Night, that I brought up this morning. We also have a cohesive strategies update meeting on Friday morning, which is, I think, the first time we've had one this year. I'm not sure. I haven't been to any others, or, I don't know if I get noticed, but, so we'll see what the cohesive strategies, it's not called that anymore, it's called Living with Fire. But I don't know what we're really accomplishing at this point, whether we're getting, the real goal was to get some money to do projects, so we'll see if we find that. I have tomorrow, there's a couple Means tomorrow.
So I do have one item. Yesterday-
Yeah, well, one other I was going to just bring up. I thought it was a good meeting today on the health and the COVID-19 and some of the public health things. I do wonder if we shouldn't get somehow involved in the education issue and be making a statement of that. And I'm, I may, I mean, I may personally want to do it, but if anyone else wants to do it. I'm very concerned with the approach that they're adopting, and I think a lot of citizens are going to be. They just, you know, that everybody's supposed to stay home and do it online. And I don't even know, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but it's not, it's not good.
It's not online.
And people, kids aren't going to do it, parents don't have time to do it. It's, you know, it's great for the good students, they'll just get further ahead, but everybody else will just be missing more school in a way.
Someone today told me that if we took California standards for education, that I believe 20-some counties in Oregon would qualify to have their schools open, if we took the California standards. So when you look at the standards here and you can't have one case in three weeks, that throws you out of having- throws you out of having in, in-class education, but then remember the, Ben Lepine voted 63% uncomfortable with going back. So I think we need to find out, what does Redmond think and what does Sisters think? I know-
Well, that's the teachers.
Right, that was the teachers.
But, you know, maybe, maybe some, I don't know, I mean, I get what they're worried about and that, I understand that, but I'm not sure whether they shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing something else with kids in some other setting, that we ought to be thinking broader than-
Outdoor class.
Yeah, like, yeah, like outdoor class is a good, good point or, or something. I'm just saying, there's not just two models and I know they're all thinking about it, but they're not, it's not taking care of the taxpayers that are paying for all these, this education, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars. It's not, it's not doing it. And that's what, I'm just, and typically we wouldn't get involved, but I do, we do represent a lot of people that care about this as much as they do the things we normally. I don't know, what do you guys think about that? Is it something we should talk about more?
Well, we're, we're right between, yeah, the governor's definition of how, you know, the decisions are going to be made for COVID, you know, opening and closing a county, there's rules and regulations for a school and the school districts and the families, and we've got the public health authorities, so we're definitely a player here. But, yeah, what, what do we do? I mean, at this point, you know, the requests from some citizens have, has been just to tell everybody to go home and sit quietly, which is like a phase one shutdown, and not have tourism, so then we can stop the cases. That would be a decision space for us, of which I, I don't know that I'm, I'm there to advocate for that right now, but I'm just saying, we've had that request. I really want to advocate to the community to full-on wear masks, wash hands, you know, stay distant, that's what our sign says right now. Watching the reports come from the Health Department week by week, you know, like those stacked charts and the different numbers, knowing where the cases are coming from, it's very dynamic still, so. You know, on one hand, we need to work together hard as a community to really slow the spread. On the other hand, the spread is just kind of out there doing its thing and we, it hasn't stabilized to, to a known quantity very well.
But I don't know that, I guess that's my concern, I don't know that it will. I mean, I'm not sure it's going to be-
Yeah.
-November the now and March the now, so what are we doing, a whole year of this? And that's a public policy generally, and then there's the school part of it, it's the, what should people with kids do with their kids if they have to go to work every day? They've, we've become, we plan our lives about with the idea that kids go somewhere to school. Maybe they go somewhere else, maybe we create some other kind of space, but you're right, we do have, one place we could be lobbying would be to the governor's office or that, you know, towards Salem about the tests that they're, you know, the standards or whatever it is, but-
Well, the governor was actually on our call last Friday with Senator Finley. They brought the governor, Pat Allen, were you on that one?
I heard part of it.
Okay, Pat Allen, the governor, and Colt Gil, the head of education, and they listened to the school districts in Eastern Oregon, there were three supervisors on that call, and they clearly want their schools open, and they clearly said, "You've got a problem with your numbers when you can only have one positive and you're thrown out."
But that didn't affect us because we have so many more people than they do, right?
Yes, we, right, we do, but we still, it's still, it's still a numbers thing when you, your positivity, like, it was great today to see that our weekly positivity was down below 2%. And, and yet the state positivity was too high also, so, you know, you can be-
But that's what I'm saying when I was trying to ask the question about if they're doing hundreds of tests in long-term care facilities, that's skewing the positivity? That's what I was trying to add, ask him, that way it kind of got lost, but if you go out to populations you think are going to be more positive as opposed to the general populace, random populace, it's two and a half.
Well, and that Traces program in Deshute County, remember, had no cases, yeah.
Yeah.
Zero, but it was-
In Umatilla, or I think it was Umatilla, they did the same thing and they came up with all kinds of cases.
Like 17% or something?
Well, it was, it was in Hermiston, they went to where the, it's the hotspot in Hermiston. That's where my family is and I, you know, they went there and it's, you know, it's, it's not good what's happening there, but it's definitely in their population and maybe it's going to be in their population and then it's going to be, they're going to have their herd immunity.
Yeah, well, that's my-
That's the other thing that no one seems to want to talk about.
So now we know where there's places where it's, you know, integrated a lot more in the community than other places, or at least that snapshot in time, and now you can take that and extrapolate, you know, what does it look like three, eight weeks and a month later? So it's happening right now.
Do you think as a, as a public health authority, we should engage somewhat in education questions? I mean, I'm inclined to think we should say some things, I'm not quite sure what or to-
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I'm always thinking, okay, what is the position statement? You know, we've got our staff, we've got professionals that can help us, but yeah, I, I haven't-
I like the professionals, but like I like to say, you know, if, if we just listened to doctors, we'd all still be living, I think I'd be living in Germany or Norway or something because nobody would have said, "Come to them." Good, safe thing to do is go to America, you know, so.
Right, it was insane.
You know, it's, go pioneer out in the middle of the valley that nobody's ever, nobody lives in.
Yes.
So I guess I'm wondering, you know, what-
I'm, I want to-
That public policy issue is a little bit broader than just, you know, and because we don't have really much, many, we don't really have very many cases still.
Why don't, why don't one of you call the Redmond superintendent and the other, I'll call the Sisters superintendent and let's get some feedback from our, you know, from the people, the major educators and see what they're, what they need us to help them with because, you know, it's an interim.
I'll make some calls with some other folks, just folks I know, so, yeah.
Right, but I just think-
A little bit of homework.
Yeah, let's-
Do they still have any parent?
So then we'll be together next, till next Wednesday.
Do they still have any parent, or teacher organizations?
You mean like PTA?
It's not called that anymore, I guess, but-
Wow.
Well, I'll ask about that too, yeah.
PTO? PTO, parent, teacher organizations, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, I think we all need to reach out and see-
Yeah, we can do homework before next Wednesday then.
Right, so we have no meeting on Monday?
Uh, AOC, there's a budget meeting in middle of the day with the committee that does that, finances, and then there's legislative meeting from like one, one o'clock to 2:30 or something like that.
It's the second Monday of the month. Okay, all right, so let's all reach out and see what we can find out because I do believe that education in Oregon, we are, our kids are just now follow, you know, they're further behind. They were already 49th in the, in the nation and now, you know, where are they going?
Well-
It's not a pretty picture.
And this is a time of transition, you know, so we don't need, so I would say as a parent, my son's a couple of years out of high school right now, we don't need to fully panic here. We've got knowledge, we've got education, we live in a first world country, we need to figure out the new normal, you know, whatever, you know, we hear that a lot about right now. The school system is there for us, just not in the same fashion. Young parents that are both working, yes, that's a bad situation, so there's definitely things that we can get engaged in, but knowledge and information is out there, you know, we're not, we're not a generation looking for a book or, you know, nobody owns the encyclopedia anymore. So I'm just pointing out that it's, is, this is a very big time of transition.
But if you look at public education in the 1700s, people had studied five languages. I mean, education has gone like this, and when you're looking at Oregon's school year, the shortest-
Oh, yeah.
-in the nation, that's not a good, that's not a good sign. Who suffers? The kids suffer.
Yeah, but, so my point is, information and knowledge is available, the system is, is what we've got to work on. That, that's exactly what I was-
Well, I, it's about time because the Oregon kids are, when people hear this, you know, Oregon has such a reputation for being so, so environmentally pure and green and clean water and everything, and yet our kids are the ones that are really suffering. So when you tell, tell people that you're, we're 49th on the graduation or 48th, they're like, "You've got, really?" It's, it's a shocking thing. It doesn't, it doesn't fit together.
Doesn't fit with the state.
It doesn't fit. So somebody's got to stand up for those guys. Any other items?
So, yeah, next Monday is the, I'll be at the Finance and Budget Committee of AOC from 11 to 1, so that's because I'm the AOC District Chairperson, but then the Legislative Committee is from 1 to 2:30. And that, that'll be a big one because that's going to be setting up for the, the best knowledge that anybody has about the short session that's happening or going to be happening.
Meetings are still virtual.
Yes.
Yeah, so we won't be traveling.
Remember, they were supposed to be here last Friday, the health meeting, I asked them to come to Bend and look what that got me, nothing, so, yeah.
Another-
Yeah, it's, it's all virtual.
Another item, yesterday I was able to meet with, uh, Lepine Mayor, and then we had Christie Bollinger joining us with the city manager also, so there was four of us, and we're talking about the Lepine path. And a couple of interesting, very specific things. Remember the rock supply has been mentioned, you know, is, what's the rock supply, what's, is it really there or something? These, this is aggregate supply that's in the pit still, in the supply area where they were working on the overpass of the Wickeup junction. So it's not taking an end loader to one of those ramps and moving the dirt, it's supply that's in the supply pit that was from there and it's, it is being held for this project, which is a multimodal path between Wickeup and downtown Lepine. So that's good to know, and that was a Bob Townsend conversation, I called him during the middle of the meeting. Also, when they talk about the right-of-way, it's really, it's a spot up by Wickeup where the, the ODOT right-of-way gets narrow for a little bit and Deshute's land kind of jets out where it was right-of-way and it gets narrow. So the whole thing for that path from Wickeup to Lepine is really just a couple hundred feet on the north corner that ODOT wants confirmation that there, there's a right-of-way in that north corner. Now I know that, we didn't know that, and I could point to a map, we don't have it here today, I'm just letting, you know, it became kind of clear about the decisions because the rest of it is just choices about permanent or, or temporary, you know, easements or whatever. So I'm just letting, you know, we kind of got some specifics and we can, you know, get together again, Christie will bring it back to us when it's time and we'll, we'll get, we'll get there.
So you're saying there's only 200 feet or so that go across county land, the rest of it's on?
Well, the right-of-way, the right-of-way for the path that goes parallel to 97 is the ODOT right-of-way. So there's a two-lane road, but the right-of-way is basically built for four lanes in a median, it's a wide right-of-way, and the path is made, is proposed to go on the side in the right-of-way, not on county land. So the, one of those engineering documents that, as I say, I mean, if we could be talking about this in another setting maybe too, but-
I like the picture what you're saying.
One of the documents that was provided to us wasn't engineered, there wasn't the right layout, it just wasn't. And so we didn't have that information, so it's good that we, you know, stood by. But we'll get there, that's all I'm saying. It'll, you'll get an update or you might have heard, yeah.
Well, no, I think you're right. I mean, the, the whole trail on the eastern edge along the highways on ODOT right-of-way.
Yeah.
That was never an ask of us, was to turn over any right-of-way there.
Well, and that's what ODOT's request is, is just to clarify that we're going to go straight up to Wickeup and not, because the right-of-way for the highway gets very narrow right there, so it's just the last couple hundred feet needs to, you know, they need access to it, so it's like, oh.
What about the south side and the west side?
Well, that's, that's for debate and discussion, I mean, that's a different discussion.
Make the whole loop or whatever.
Yeah.
You're just saying the, those things-
But we kind of broke it into pieces and now it's pretty clear about who's doing what and why. So I'm just letting, you know, we kind of got it conceptually worked out yesterday and then, and now it's had a paperwork that'll follow and we'll talk about it in the near future.
Oh.
So that was a good one.
I do want to say as other items, our COVID number today was eight, so that's definitely keeping us on a happier side of under 10.
Yeah, if we can, yeah.
Well, and we're doing, if you notice those numbers, we're doing 1,500 to 2,000 tests a week now.
Right.
So that's, that, where we were doing 200 to 300, so we're doing five to six times as many tests as, so that's like one or two cases today if we're doing 200 tests or-
Right.
It's really low.
So let's hope that our positivity is outstanding next, you know, what-
But like they said, they get one, you know, one situation and the whole thing blows up, you know, that's what basically they were saying about that, two weeks where-
Right, where there was, if you would have taken the 64 out of that, those two weeks, it would have made a huge difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I tried to point that out at a, one of my meetings. I said, you know, if you could have just taken that out or, you know, or it wouldn't have happened if we could have, you know, done a, be more proactive on testing, so let's hope that they finish testing all those other facilities. Because we've got to, we've got to keep it, we've got to keep those people protected.
Yeah.
Yesterday I also attended the Public Safety Coordinating Council, Judge Ashby's the chair of that, and Tom and I were both at that one. And it was a, what, a quarterly or semi, it was a Justice Reinvestment Grant reporting period, whatever the period was. Was it twice a year? Yeah, okay, twice a year. So Mary's Place Casa Kids Center had reports about the good work they're doing, how they've gone virtual on some of their support for the kids and the handoffs. But also this is full-on kind of our parole and probation and then the moral cognitive recognition classes and the, you know, the parole and probation services provided, so there's just a big report that was, was presented to us yesterday. Public Safety Coordinating Council receives and acknowledges that report before it goes to the State Justice Commission, so that, that was the process yesterday. People are pretty proud of their services at the point, some of the numbers, interesting, they, we're having cohorts from 2016, 17, 18, and 19 now of recidivism and some of the programs, so, you know, some of the numbers have gone up and down, no drastic changes, but it's, there's positive things going on. It's a very generic report here that I'm giving you, but it was all in detail yesterday, so.
So I saw in the news this morning, I think, that our DA is now burying the pictures of people that are arrested, so if you really need to see what they look like, you have to know how to work the program. Did anybody see that, hear that announcement?
No.
It was on the news this morning when I was watching it at 5:45 or something, I think, this morning. Anyway, yeah, it's, the DA decided that, because they're innocent until proven guilty and that, yes, you know, the-
So all pictures of charged but not convicted-
Right.
-will not be available?
Well, you can still get them, but you just, you have to click and then you have to click, you know, you, it's, you've got to work the system, you've got to know how to work, work the program in order to get them.
Also, tonight's the public hearing from Bend City Council on the tax increment financing proposal, and I haven't really prepared, but I've been kind of on the verge of still wanting to, you know, sign up for testimony or do something tonight, so.
Oh, really?
I mean, I, we, we've done our piece, we've provided a resolution and a position, there's been quite a bit of, you know, coverage, like in the newspaper and some emails and-
Yeah, I saw that Alan Brechner wrote an editorial, but then Moi Newbold had one today about what it's good, that's Land Watch, they're in favor of it because otherwise we're going to take all the forest and farmland, is what she said. So, which is just their whole issue. Yeah, uh, it didn't, I think, it seems like they're going to go forward. I don't, I haven't heard anything to the opposite of you, Tom.
Well, I mean, it'd be interesting to see if they decide to modify it at all. I think that, I agree that they, they will go forward, they've invested too much in this, but whether they shrink it or shorten it will be interesting, or even acknowledge that that's a possibility will be very interesting tonight.
I noticed all the comments about the taxing districts that get hurt, they don't really refer to the county itself, they refer to the county sheriff and the library, but they don't really seem to ever mention us in the paper, you notice that?
Schools is-
Yeah, they mention schools and, but it's weird that they don't put us in as a.
Affected party?
Yeah, as an affected party, um, in the paper.
At least 101, you would think would be.
They, yeah. Yeah, I was surprised with that.
Well, when they call in or put on hold, then they'll know.
Well, I was going to tell you about the DA. So we did, we did hire, Eric knows this already, we did decide to hire the consultant from New York to do the DA, um, office. What do we call it?
Best practices, Dave.
Best practices.
Best practices, yeah, for efficiency. I was the only one that was concerned about whether or not somebody from that space would do great here. But people thought that they'd, she'd, the main person had done a good job before, so we'll see. But I don't know where we'll end up with it.
So how long will that take?
Well, we're hoping to get it done by December. That way we can have it for our budget meeting.
Before our December budget meeting?
That's what their hope is, yeah. It's not, she's only going to be here a couple of times, right, Eric? And yeah, come out and do a couple of investigations, a lot of interviews, and then put it together and report.
Yeah, want to check on her availability now.
Okay.
They're going to look at staffing, efficiency, and.
And also, uh, this firm has a lot of experience with CARPEL, which is the current case management system used by the DA's office. So that was another benefit.
Uh, yeah, that was one of the reasons that John liked it.
Is there going to be an interview opportunity or a, a sessions with individual commissioners, myself, hopefully?
Yeah.
Because my thought process is there's education for myself involved with this also. As in, you know, I, I know the sheriff and the operations and the jail tour. Uh, I understand, uh, you know, the DA's office. I've been there, I've seen a few, you know, understand some of the flow of the cases. But I'm sure there's lots of activity that, you know, I just don't even know. So there'd be an education opportunity for all of us, uh, you know, at the, for the budget level, you know, because that's what we're talking about, is the, the appropriate resources to do the service effectively. So education is what I would be, you know, looking for, for me, too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because we do provide the staffing for the district, I mean, it's property tax, it's one of the most property tax-driven parts of our operation.
Yeah.
We should know what, what it takes to have a good office.
Or where the decision points are. Because some of it is policy also, you know, the balance of charged cases and, and court time and, uh, you know, the disposition of some of these things can be done in different ways. Some are very, uh, uh, you know, shortcut, other ones are, are full social support programs to reduce recidivism. So understanding the difference between some of that is, will be valuable.
Well, I know, one other thing I wanted to ask about was your impressions of the, the solid waste proposal Monday. Did you, what'd you think of the proposal? And I'd, I'd heard about it more. I actually learned some things there that I hadn't heard before about the, what were your initial thoughts? I know I'm going to be asked. Do you want to look at it any further?
I thought it was fascinating that they said Tennessee. And then he gave me South Carolina. And then it was something else. And no, they really didn't have something going on in Tennessee. And I don't like, you know, just be upfront, hey, this, you know, the idea is wonderful, but don't give me a story that is not true. And so when all that happened.
I mean, answers that question.
I was like, you've got to be kidding me. You could not actually tell me that you're negotiating with Tennessee. What's, you know, what's in South Carolina real, you know, anyway? Or Greenville, is that North Carolina? Anyhow, because I, I thought that was kind of unfortunate.
Well, that's kind of an ongoing thing about how much of this, do they actually have going somewhere? Tim said, yeah, afterwards, that he thinks that they do, the exact, the process they use to turn stuff into carbon, they, is that process exists. But he's more questioning of the, their ability to sort out everything that comes to the landfill and make it, you know, deal with it all.
It really sounded too good to be true. And, um, but I love, like, to me, I love the idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but it sounded too good to be true. Yes. It was going to be standing there pulling out the batteries.
There's a lot of excitement in the opportunities there. But yeah, I don't know that it was, uh, ready, uh, for us to be a partner in this unless there's a little bit more examples, uh, real world. Uh, the numbers really are kind of off. As in, they wanted us to pay the $50 a ton for them to take it. But that would really disrupt our whole system. So that, that was their proposal, but I don't know that, that it's going to be a good time to negotiate any further at this point. Um, but yeah, Tim is experienced with this. He's been studying it. He's got a, got a lot of great history. I spoke to him last evening also. And, um, he said, yeah, when these things are prime, it'll, everybody will know. It'll get a little bit more exciting because they're close. Some of these things are close, but they don't quite pencil. And it wouldn't, it would cost us money to get engaged with something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be great to be on the forefront, but I'm not quite.
Well, so for us, as a franchise, or a enterprise fund operator of the landfill, it reminds me that we need to stay focused on getting to that next landfill location. Because notice what they said. They said, well, we'll do a, a 100-ton train or whatever he was talking about, right? Uh, the line, the, the specific path. But that's only part of the waste. So he's not going to take all our waste. He's going to take a subset of the waste and we still need a landfill. So that's a reminder that we need to stay real focused on advocating for and working through the process of a new sited location, which could be the last one for the rest of time. As I say, the one we're at right now, I, you know, if 10 years from now is the time it's going to be full, even if we implement something like this, it'd be 15 or 20 years from now. So we really need to stay focused on getting to the next landfill location and welcome the high-tech super projects that, that make sense, you know? So think about what he was saying, though. Uh, carbon and, uh, you know, uh, you know, carbon fuel, synthetic gas to liquid or natural gas, plus the, the black, black diamonds out of the backside or whatever it was. What I started thinking of, well, that's the, the waste processing plant for the extraterrestrial emissions, you know, going to Mars or the moon. That's exactly what you want there, if you're really going to do something like that. So I could see that happening in, you know, a generation or two. I don't know if it's going to happen soon.
And I, I do want to acknowledge that we lost a Marine from Bend.
Yeah.
And when you talk about that, in a piece of equipment from, I believe, the 70s, I read, and how they, you know, use them. And I just, you know, I, we lost, you know, what is it, nine? Nine Americans that were serving our country. And I, um, you know, I want to send, um, our sympathy to his family. Because that was just a horrible story to read. So, you know, and you're talking about technology and those, um, apparently those really don't, haven't had, they haven't had problems with them. You know, where their, other military pieces of equipment, you know, you hear that they've got problems. But, so that was, that was a very amazing. And when we find out what caused that, that will be interesting. I mean, they couldn't even identify which boat it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah. There were like, they had 13 of them in there and they weren't sure which one it was. So there's a lot of work to be done there. And, um, it was really, um, you know, young, gorgeous Americans. All just gave their life up for their country. It's very sad, so. Do we have an executive session today?
We do not. We have a couple other items, though.
Okay.
You mentioned the special session, uh, a little while ago. So, um, that is scheduled for next week. So we've, we, and invite Whitney to join us, too. We've been, um, studying the, their hit list, the ones that they consider, as well as their preserve list, those areas that they want to preserve. We shipped it out to all of our departments. We've had them look at it. There were two, two items that kind of jumped out. One was PERS. And we've since heard from Greg that we think we're safe there. That, um, the money that they committed as part of the, the side account for the PERS reform is already expended by the state, so it's not part of the hit list. The other one is, uh, funding for county fairs was on their hit list. And we, uh, just been working with, uh, the Oregon Fairs Association, lobbying for that. We don't know where that's going to land, but that one, that one's on the list for next week. Two of the, the bigger funding streams, as you know, from the state are for our community corrections as well as, uh, our, uh, health funding, uh, both on the behavioral and public health side. Those, all three of those appear to be, um, uh, priorities for the legislature to preserve. But they're, you know, what happens as part of that, um, you know, obviously is subject to discussion and, and review next week. So we'll, we'll be watching that closely. Whitney's been forwarding some information to you on, from our state lobbyist. So, um, other than just acknowledging that, um, I guess the, the question for you all is if there's anything you'd like us to do, uh, specific to the session next week. You know, certainly as we hear things come up, you'll hear it also likely, you know, as part of your AOC discussions on Monday. But, you know, we'll be watching closely as well. And, uh, if there are things come up that you want to, some immediate response to in terms of lobbying, a letter, advocacy, we're happy to, to do that.
What are the published dates for the session?
I believe, um, August 10th is the start date.
So it is Monday?
Right.
And is expected to go for two or three days or?
Through the 12th is, um.
Three days. So House Day, Senate Day, Switch Bills Day, and then send it off to the Governor Day. Huh.
I just had pulled up that email from Phil, August 10th through 12th.
Yep, okay. Yeah, so if we're having a meeting with Association of Oregon Counties at 1 o'clock, that'll, that, they'll probably have the set of bills by then, too. I mean, are there published bills at this time? Or is there all kind of Christmas tree-type bills where they could any, hang anything off of them, maybe?
I haven't seen a proposed rule list.
Yeah.
And I also have seen some news coverage indicating that that hasn't been finalized, so.
Okay.
And we have it when we see something from Phil, we'll be sure to forward it.
Yeah, so maybe by tomorrow or Friday, we'll.
What, what they have put out is a list, is their list of identified potential cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Statements.
Yeah, and we've seen that.
High priority to preserve. And then a, literally a list of, of specific surgical cuts.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that?
Departments and.
Do we have that list?
So is the fair cut, is it like 25,000?
It's 50%.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
52,000, I believe, is what Jeff said, our portion of the impact of that.
Okay, so we were getting 100,000? I didn't think we were getting that much.
No, I think 50 was the total.
52 was the total and they're going to cut half of that, I believe.
I think it was 50% at the state level is what they were proposing to cut of the overall allocation for county fairs statewide. And what we've, I think, historically received is in the neighborhood of, isn't it that 50,000?
Um, I'm pulling that up, so.
Where's the list that?
Right. Um, it's roughly $25,000 per fair for the upcoming payment that is due to fairs.
See, we were actually, um, trying to push to get 100,000 for the fairs because so many fairs in rural Oregon need, need some extra funding to get them back up. And so many fairs are going to be really economically, you know, destroyed for next year. If they don't, you know, if they cut that 52 or whatever they're getting, so. I know we sent letters, we signed letters already, didn't we, for that?
AOC, uh.
Yeah, and also, as I said, uh, the Oregon Fairs Association is lobbying pretty heavily on that, on preserving the fair funding as well.
Oh, and I sent a letter on it, I know, just on my own, the other day, so.
Where's that list of cuts? Is that something you sent out already?
Sent that before.
And we can get that out again.
When did you send it?
I'd have to go back and.
We could go on something, I think.
Okay.
Because there, yeah.
I saw Phil Schuer's memo or Paul Phillips' memo, but I don't remember. I was just curious. I just don't think we're going to have much influence, I think, so all we're going to do is watch.
Well, the one, but Betsy Johnson is one of the co-chairs of Ways and Means. And she is, she is really good about respecting and protecting the rural community. And she'll do, I know she'll do probably all she can for fairs. I would think. I would be hopeful. I mean, so at least it's better, at least have one out of three there trying to help us. And then what is it? Um, the E-Board is Senator Finley and Representative Smith. And there's another one from over here, isn't there? Do you remember?
Senator Hansel, I think.
Oh, yeah, just Senator Hansel from, um, Athena.
What else?
Um, I'll let you cover that.
Um, we received a request from Sunshul Organ Daily. I had sent a note earlier today. They're interested, they're planning, um, local election coverage for the fall and they're interested in potentially using Burns and Sawyer for a series of three candidate debates. They have a live drop in this room, which enables them to go live on the air without having to use a satellite truck. And so they reached out, um, to talk about that conceptually. And I, we wanted to connect with the board, um, to make you aware of the request and also because it would potentially impact your meeting schedule a tiny bit. They are interested in hosting these debates in a, in a time window of 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. So I think we, it would likely impact two board meeting dates in October where the board may have to, if we entertain this request, include a meeting earlier than normal, potentially around 4:00. So, um, we have explored with them, um, there may be some additional cleaning costs that they would pay if they were to use the room, um, as we kind of work through, you know, COVID precautions and best practices. But, um, just wanted to make you aware of that request and, and see, um.
And this is in lieu, in lieu of the League of Women Voters, right?
I don't know that it's in lieu of the League of Women Voters. It's independent of the forums that the league has held in the past.
Yeah, League of Women Voters is doing one of the, uh, City Club of Bend, I think, or Central, or whatever it's called. That's, I've got a notice about that one from Suzie, you know? I think it's separate.
So this room becomes a physical space that may work better than most
Correct.
for COVID times.
No publics involved.
That's a good point. The public wouldn't be invited. It would just be candidates, um, a moderator and potentially a producer. So it'd be fewer than five people, I think, in the room.
Sounds like an excellent idea to be helpful for the community and, you know?
Any county commission races or just city council?
I think they are interested in the county commission.
Oh.
Be sure to correspond back and let them know that that is okay. And we'll make sure that Sharon kind of has a heads up, um, on those, those meeting dates in October that may be impacted.
So you said three?
It would be three evenings, but only two of those evenings would impact.
Okay.
Monday and Wednesday, um, probably the week that ballots go out.
Do you know how that, do you have that date? What day do ballots go out?
I think it's the week of October 12th. I want to say 11th, 12th, and 13th. Yeah. Uh, the October 12th through the 14th, I think, is what they were originally looking at, but that's subject to change.
I think the ballots go out the 14th, maybe.
Okay. All right, no, that sounds.
Yeah, I'm excited about, uh, offering this space, you know? Let's make sure we just think of it, uh, kind of in the legal fashion of what's appropriate. But I, you know, if this is the space, the, as I say, the technology is here. Uh, the space is nice and big and it's a good opportunity.
And we have our logo in the back. They won't, they'll leave that, right?
I believe they will.
So everyone will know that we were kind and, thank you, kind with our spot.
That's all we have.
Oh, that's all. Okay. All right, so I do believe then we may adjourn our meeting today.